Hello. Good afternoon. Sorry, we're a little bit delayed. We are, I guess we have a lot of people who were attending the State of the City today, so thank you for deciding to hang out with us instead of going to see the mayor's presentation. Welcome to this meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we get started, just want to do a few reminders of some of the housekeeping ground rules here. Number one, if you haven't already, upfront, there is, there's forms for those of you who are coming to speak on different items. Feel free to fill out those forms, so we will know, to give you the opportunity to speak before the commission. As you are speaking before the commission, please remember to share with us your name and address, and remember that comments are to be limited to five minutes. We also want to encourage everyone to avoid making repetitious comments, so we reserve the right to step in if we've already heard the same comment from one of your neighbors about similar concerns. And most importantly, just remember that we're here to be as respectful as possible to each other, to respect the process, and just want to make sure that we can be respectful in our discourse. So with that said, let's move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the receipt of the minutes from the June 23, 2022 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hinkle to receive the minutes from the previous meeting, and seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. Are we good? And all the votes have been cast. That motion carries. We're now on to continuance requests. We're on to, oh, did we miss somebody?
No.
Oh. We're now on to continuance requests, and beginning with, oh, perfect. Welcome. We've got our, we're on to uncontested continuance requests. We're going to have Cindy go ahead and fill in for these uncontested continuance requests, if she doesn't mind.
Okay, we have item number 30, SP 557, deferred till July 28. Item number 31, SPUD 1425, deferred to July 28. Item number 32, CE 1080, deferred to July 28. SP, I'm sorry. Item number 33, SPD 1429, deferred to July 28. Item number 34, CE 1079, deferred to July 28. Item number 35, SPUD 1423, deferred to August 11. Item number 36, PC 10826, deferred to August 25. Item number 37, CE 7410, deferred to September the 8th. And item number 38, PUD 1814, has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wanted to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the uncontested continuances, as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the continuance requests, as read. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We are now on to new continuance requests. Jeff, are you ready, or? Perfect.
We have two new requests. Item 24 is SPD 1428, and item 25, oh, sorry, that's deferred to July 28. And item 25, SPD 1426, deferred to August 11.
Excellent. Is there anyone here that wanted to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the new requests, as read.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve the continuances, as read, seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We are on to our consent docket. I think there are, we've, after having some discussion with staff, I think there are a couple of items that we want to pull from the consent docket.
The first item is okay to continue.
Okay. The first item was good. So items, items 2, 4, and it looks like we do have a citizen to be heard on item 6, so I think that would be good to go ahead and just pull that item from the consent docket. But anyway, let's go ahead and have those items read, please.
So 2, 4.
2, 4, and 6.
Item 2 is CE 1077, application to close Northwest 106th Street between North Hudson Avenue and North Walker Avenue, located at 420 Northwest 106th Street.
Good afternoon.
What are you talking about? Are you wanting to?
This one. Was he reading the whole?
Yeah, we'll amend the motion to make sure that we hear that one separately. Okay, so we want to?
He only read that one, I didn't.
So that one's being done separately? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So you want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Without those? Okay, apologies. So the consent, the, starting at the beginning of the consent docket. KC 1076, application to close 453.23 feet of the East West Alley, north of Southwest 59th Street and east of South Bypass Terrace, located at 5903 South Independence Avenue. And item 2 will be pulled out. Item 3, PC 10825, application to rezone 2824, Southwest 59th Street, from C3 to R4. Item 4 will also be pulled out and placed on requiring separate votes. Item 5 is case PC 10828, application to rezone 7025, North Santa Fe Avenue, from R1 to the I-2 district. Item 6 will be considered separately. Item 7, KC 7454, final plat of Cornerstone Creek, Section 1, and that is located southwest, south of Northwest 150th Street and west of North Morgan Road. Item 8, KC 7455, final plat of the enclave at Hefner Crossing, Phase 1, located south of East Hefner Road and west of North Kelly Avenue. Item 9, KC 7458, final plat of Cypress Plains, Phase 2, located south of Northwest 164th Street and east of North Council Road. Item 10 is KC 7459, final plat of the Colony at Shadow Lake, located north of southwest 104th Street and west of South Pennsylvania Avenue. And item 11, KC 7460, final plat of the Citizen, located east of North Robinson Avenue and north of Northwest 5th Street.
Thank you. And again, just as a friendly reminder, we are, we are gonna, we're pulling items 2, 4, and 6 from the consent docket, but on the other items listed on the consent docket, is there anyone here that wanted to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
Yes.
Did we? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Would you like to come up? Are you wanting to be heard on one of the items on the consent docket?
I wanted to speak on CE 7455. I didn't know, I didn't catch whether that was one as I was looking.
Yeah, that's number 8.
That's number 8. So we can remove item 8. We can go ahead and remove item 8 in our, on the other, any other items? So we're, at this point, we're at items 2, 4, 6, and 8, being pulled from the consent docket.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent docket excluding items 2, 4, 6, and 8 to be heard separately.
The motion before the body is to approve of the consent docket as amended, and that has been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that motion passes. I think we're in line to hear, we're in line to hear item 2. Mr. Butler?
Item 2 is KC 1077, application to close Northwest 106th Street between North Hudson Avenue and North Walker Avenue, located at 420 Northwest 106th Street.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, which is Pat Garrett. Mr. Garrett's also here with us. Much of the land surrounding this closing application is owned by Mr. Garrett, including both the north and the south side of the street. You'll notice, west of the subject site, CE 944, all of that land also owned by Mr. Garrett, previously closed and vacated. So what we're seeking to do here is frankly exactly what we have done in the past, except for staff has put new requests within closing applications that are problematic. Notably, number 1, staff seeks a perpetual easement for a host of things that do not exist today. In fact, none of these exist. Cindy, would you go to the aerial, please? If anybody had the pleasure of driving south of Hefner, west of Hudson, you would have noticed that it is not, in fact, a street, and it is just a accumulation of gravel that serves as essentially a private access drive. There is no wastewater facilities, water facilities, sidewalks, or traffic control systems that exist. So asking for perpetual easement greater than what exists today is problematic. So we would ask to strike TE 1, which has been done several times by the commission. Now, to prove up what I just said, what we are willing to do is, within TE 2, agree that we will provide a survey to the city, showing that there are no public infrastructure within the area which we seek to close and ultimately will vacate. We would, however, ask to delete the second sentence of TE 2, because of course, any building permit will require Public Works to review it, and proper drainage will have to be done in accordance with the city ordinances. So we would ask to strike TE 1, keep TE 2 to the extent of the first sentence, and strike the second sentence. We believe that by providing the survey, we're going to show exactly what the city has, and why closing and ultimately vacating this will not cause any problem.
Okay. Any questions for, any questions for David before we go ahead and hear from Barry Lodge regarding this issue? Because I think it's important that we hear from the city regarding this amendment.
Yeah, just a quick question. If deleting that second sentence on the portion regarding the street being closed, do you propose to, like, add any, like, private drainage improvements shall be reviewed by Public Works as required?
Sure. I mean, the ordinance requires that, so I'm not, when the staff says that a portion of the street being closed serves as a natural drainage path, I, I'm not sure I understand what that means. It's a private gravel drive.
I think it's, I mean, I just think it says it's existing, you know, existing conditions. It, you know, the land drains that way, uses that corridor to drain.
Yeah, so we agree to meet whatever the ordinances require in terms of drainage.
So it just then becomes private drainage improvements within, which then have to be reviewed by Public Works?
Sure.
I'll let Mr. Lodge add any specific language, if you'd like.
Barry Lodge, City of Oklahoma City, Public Works. We would like to have the TEs left in place as they are currently written, on the advice of our municipal councillor. We need to have that left in place until we have the survey that does show that there's nothing there. And because that is a natural drainage way, that we leave that in place until that information is provided to us with the application. Basically, it's a one sheet, piece of paper that says we want to close this without the supporting documentation, and that's why we're requesting that, because it is a street right-of-way, and that we would like to have that language remain as it is currently written. We can, if they would like to defer it, then we can negotiate that and bring it back to this commission at a later date.
So the issue we have, of course, is, when they ask us for a survey, it kind of feels like an unfair burden on the property owner. Because when we present staff the city's own GIS maps, which of course show that what I'm saying is accurate, there's no sewer, there's no water, there's nothing, we're told that, well, the GIS maps may or may not be accurate. Well, that's, that's not our fault. I mean, how can we, how can we be required to provide the city better information on the city's own infrastructure? So what we're willing to do is, let's strike TE 1, we'll prove it up with a survey between now and city council, and if we're wrong at city council, then I guess they can make the argument that our survey reflects that there is public infrastructure that needs perpetual easement, and we'll see what the council says. But the city's information is telling us that none of those things exist. Pat owns all of the properties surrounding this. He can tell you that no infrastructure exists, and a perpetual easement for a street that the city has failed to maintain for, I don't know, 100 years, seems a bit unreasonable.
But then I think it is also that, ought not to go along with Mr. Box's argument, we get the survey prior to council, then that TE can be stricken at that point. So it provides no additional burden on them to leave TE 1 exactly as it is written.
We, we believe it does. I mean, the fact that we're even agreeing to the additional burden of doing a survey is frankly, I think, unreasonable, but we're willing to do it because we know exactly what's out there. So much like we've done many times with this TE, here, it doesn't make sense to maintain it. The instances in which I've stood at this podium and agreed to the TE are when there is public infrastructure. You may recall that at the Oak Development. We agreed to the TE because of course it's there, and we're going to have to work with staff on relocating it, but a perpetual easement to maintain things that don't exist doesn't make any sense.
So at this point, we are, the, the decision for the commission is, do we leave the language in place and allow the applicant to prove that there's nothing in the easement that would inhibit the city from feeling comfortable eliminating that, that perpetual easement? Or do we delete that TE and then give him the chance to prove that there's no issue with it later? So it's just our comfort level. Any, any thoughts on that?
I have some.
Please.
And I think that the process of proving up whether in fact there are improvements in place or not is an important one, and an important safeguard for the city. And if they want to change how they have done that in the past, from, you know, a simple piece of paper that you sign and off you go, I'm all in favor of that, I think. But I, I'm a little uncomfortable with it being changed in this manner, sort of at the last moment, in, you know, we, we've looked at these before, it's never been an issue. I think if, if we're going to make that kind of a change to our policy and practices, we need to make it known, make sure that applicants are aware of it at the beginning of their process, and not on the day of a hearing.
So you're saying, so it sounds like you're on the side of eliminate TE 1 between now and council?
That I'm not quite so sure.
Okay.
Because I, I don't know, and, you know, you can make me an argument, I'm willing to be persuaded, but if, if it is left in place until council, and you're able to provide what they need between now and then, what will the harm be?
Well, the harm is, it, it creates a scenario at city council where we're having to explain to council why we're amending the application from the podium, when typically council is used to seeing items worked out here at the planning commission stage. And, and again, I go back to, how can we, as a property owner, not rely on the city's GIS map? For us to be told that, well, that may or may not be accurate, it's like, well, why is it our burden to tell you what we're, it's like when my daughter asked me where her shoes are.
Well, I mean.
They're her shoes. It's not my job to tell her where her shoes are.
I think the answer to that is, they've got an easement, it's 15 feet wide, or whatever it is, and so, you know, it's perfectly within their purview to, to rely upon it and say, well, yeah, this whole 15 feet, if you want part of it, show us where, and, you know, it's, you know, it's not unusual for people not to have a more precise sense of where their actual improvements are in place within an easement. That's very common.
But the existence of them.
That's a little different.
The GIS map is void of their existence.
I, I agree.
And so I, I'm with you. If it existed, the exact location within an easement, of course. Who could tell until you dig it up? Right? But the, whether or not they actually exist, it's a little hard for me to accept that the city doesn't know what they have.
Well, so I had, I don't have any information about how urgent this is. If you would like to resolve it before there's a, a vote today, do you want to take two weeks and see if it can be resolved?
No.
Before this goes on to council?
We, we.
With the CE's in place?
Again, we would prefer to have TE 1 deleted, consistent with what the city's GIS maps are telling us, we're willing to take the extra burden to actually go spend money to provide a survey to the city to, to prove that their stuff isn't there.
Can, can we, so you guys are going to do the survey? You're willing to do the survey? Then can we just amend the TE to say, leave it as is, and then do an "or"? Or applicant shall provide a survey prior to final approval that indicates no utilities are present, and easement's not needed? Something to that effect? Would that work?
Say that again.
We just do an "or"? We leave the, we leave the TE as is?
And if a survey reflects that the infrastructure is what I say it is, TE 1 can go away. No perpetual easement is necessary.
Yeah, it's an "or". It's an "or". It's this language, or a survey is provided by the owner to indicate no infrastructure is present, and an easement is not, a perpetual easement is not needed.
We're good with that.
I would ask if it, that it be approved by the?
Public Works.
Public Works Department.
I think if we put in that language to say this or that, it leaves us in exactly the situation of eliminating that TE that we're wanting to keep. It, it doesn't, it doesn't accomplish what we're trying to accomplish with Public Works, and have that proven before we strike the TE. In essence, that, that leaves it up to his, to the client, the applicant's discretion on which one they want to do, and we're coming back at staff saying, we won't have both of those in there.
No. It's saying if the survey proves that there's no infrastructure, I think, Commissioner Claire, you tell me I'm wrong, if the, the survey that you've put upon us to do shows in fact that there's nothing, then a perpetual easement wouldn't be needed. I think that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
And so Barry, you're saying that, no, you still would, would want the easement?
Well, I think, it, it would still be at that council decision at, at that time. The survey is going to be what decides that, whether that is, so why do we need to decide, have it decided today, which is essentially what we're doing? We're going to strike that. Well, if it proves it at, when it goes to city council, it would be stricken anyway.
Well, under that theory, then why do we even have a planning commission hearing? Right? Of course, we, we have a planning commission hearing to work these things out, so that when it goes to council, it, it's worked out. Under that theory, there's no reason to negotiate or talk about anything on this docket. We'll just show up at council and see what happens.
Well, go ahead, Commissioner Privet.
I'm just wondering, if there is utilities there, why, why wouldn't they have an easement already?
Because there's nothing there.
Okay, well.
I think I did, so excuse me, I did skip a step. Let's make sure we've heard from the public. Is there anyone here that wanted to be heard on this item, before we try to reach a final conclusion?
I mean, I think this could be done without a survey. They could just do some title research, and you would know.
Also, in fairness to the applicant, and by the way, does any, any other commissioners have questions of Barry, of, of David? Okay, then I think we're ready to discuss the issue and move forward, but to be fair, I think we have eliminated TE 1 a number of times over the, because we've seen this language, and we've just, David's made this request, and we've eliminated it a number of times without even really having this discussion. My understanding, because of the pre-meeting we had, is that the municipal councillor's given some different advice, that we should delay before going to, to council on this issue. I'm, I'm inclined at this point, in light of the fact that there was not an actual conversation before it was brought to the commission, to say, let's eliminate TE 1, and let them, let the, let the decision be made at council, whether or not we need the perpetual easement or not. But I'd also recommend, at this point, just my own thoughts, and I'm, I would love to hear what the rest of the commission thinks, I, I also think it would be a good idea for us to have a conversation after this with applicants that frequently appear before the commission, to settle how we want to handle this going forward, so that there's clear notice that we have an expectation that we're going to be handling things differently. So any thoughts on that?
I think that makes perfect sense, and this is an easy case to do that, because apparently there's not anything in place.
Okay. Well, then it sounds, then I think we're just ready for a motion to eliminate and include the elimination of TE 1, the, the deletion of the second sentence in TE 2, unless there's anything to be heard on that issue as well. Deleting the second sentence in TE 2, Barry?
I thought we were going to modify that language.
Or modify it.
Is that what we decided?
So, but of course, the issue is, let's assume, let's, let's say we close and vacate, and we go construct a building on, on top of this. We, we don't want to leave that natural drainage way, but no matter what we do, we'll require detailed drainage calculations to be handed to Public Works, and we will have to meet the ordinance. So whatever the drainage ordinance requires, is what we have to do. So we would ask to delete TE, or the, the second half of TE 2, because we're not seeking to avoid any drainage requirements. Like, the whole, the whole purpose of closing and vacating is to, you know, gain additional land to, to develop buildings. And there would be no point if we said, well, yeah, we're going to vacate it, but we'll keep this an open drainage way. We don't know what might be built there, but we can tell you whatever it is will require us to meet the drainage ordinance of the city.
And that was my understanding also. The only question was whether we were going to add some, some language just to clarify or, or institutionalize the, that statement, something like, you know, private drainage improvements will be approved by Public Works, you know?
Sure. I mean, the answer is it has to anyways, but yes, if, if that makes everyone feel better, we can say we'll have to meet the public, private, no matter what, we have to meet the drainage ordinance.
I mean, if it's already the ordinance, then it doesn't need to be in the TE, in my.
We do that all the time, though.
It's fine with me. Barry?
I, I wouldn't have any objection striking that second sentence. It's a, that was a statement of clarification on why some of that would be, what, what we would want to, basically in support of TE 1 is part of that. I don't see what difference it makes to the case or to the survey that's going to be prepared, but that is a, a statement of clarification. One other point of, of fact in that is that in this public right-of-way, and it is a platted public right-of-way, there is an infrastructure. It's not an asphalt street, it is a gravel street, but nonetheless, that still is going to constitute an infrastructure that is there, built within the, the public right-of-way. So I think that would, at this point, go in favor of keeping the perpetual easement in place until such time as the other, the survey shows that there are no other facilities in place, and then that determination can be made prior to or at the city council meeting.
Okay. Any, any other questions for David or Barry before we hear the motion, it sounds like? Do you want to make that motion, Commissioner Powers, or are you prepared with that language?
I will.
Thank you.
And we can vote and see where we are. And so I'm going to move approval of item number 2, CE 1077, eliminating TE 1, and eliminating the second sentence of TE 2.
So the motion is to approve, to recommend approval of SE 1077, with the amendments as read, and, ooh.
I double tapped.
Gotcha. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen.
I'll just move to second.
Oh, okay. Were you intending to, or? Okay, you're good with it. Okay, please cast your votes. Oh, it hasn't, it's corrected up here, it's not corrected up there. The second was made by, yeah, Commissioner Goveen. There we go.
Thank you.
And the motion carries. And so I guess we'll hold you to a future conversation about this issue.
I, I would love a future conversation. I, I would love a future conversation.
Great.
And I, I do want to be sure that going forward, applicants are notified at the time of filing that this is a requirement through some sort of, you know, documentation that comes with the application or whatever. This is, it's not the kind of thing you need to find out on the day of a hearing.
Yeah, and, and we, we can have these conversations, because again, the, the problem is, it's a standard boilerplate TE, and every closing application is wildly different. Like if it has or hasn't, doesn't have utilities, but yes. Look forward to that conversation.
I, I would agree, though, that, that the key here is the survey should have been done, so that's all resolved before, before it even shows up. I mean, it doesn't, it takes a week to get a survey, you know, I mean, give or take. It's not that complicated to get done in, in time.
Well, want to make sure we're setting clear expectations.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I think we're ready for item four, PC 10827.
This is an application to rezone 8401 Southwest 74th Street from PUD 1361 to I-2.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. You know, I never get items on the consent docket, so it's just a, a wonderful treat to have both of them pulled. This is an application north of Southwest 74th Street to go from the PUD that would allow residential to I-2. You will recall an application that came through not too long ago around this property. So we do have I-2 surrounding on the north and the west, and then we're bordered by a, a rail line on the east. So we believe it to be compatible with the area, and we happen to answer any questions.
I think we just needed an amendment to, staff requested this, because we needed an amendment to some portion of the staff report. Go ahead.
Yes, that's correct. Dustin Segre, Utilities Department. I just want to have on record that we need to amend, the staff report is paragraph 11 C-10, which states a 16-inch waterline extension required along Highway 152. That is not required. I'm, I mistook in the westward boundary of the property that I thought had abut State Highway 152, but it does not. So therefore, that requirement can be stricken from the staff report.
Excellent. And so that needs to be a TE to eliminate that? Or just as long as you're just.
As long as.
Putting it on the record that that's.
Correct. I just wanted to be on record, so that way there was the expectation of the client and everything, and the applicant, that that was not a requirement in the staff report.
Excellent. Is there anyone here who wanted to be heard on, on this item? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll move approval of item number four, PC 10827.
Commissioner Powers has moved to recommend approval of PC 10827. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now ready for item six.
This is case C 7453, a final plat of Ashley Farms, Section 1, located south of Southwest 119th Street and west of South Council Road.
Good, good afternoon. Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. Phase one, we've got 115 lots on about 84 acres. This is a, a duplicate of the master development plan in the approved PUD. It mimics the approved preliminary plat. I think we've got two standard TE's, and we agree with both those, so happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Excellent. Thank you. And again, commissioners, I, we did receive, we had a request for comment, and so I wanted to give our, our neighbor an opportunity to speak on that issue, unless there's any questions that you all have for Kendall.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
About the amenities for the, for the development, where they're located, what they're going to do, the fourth.
Well, for starters, there's a, there's no requirement in the PUD for amenities. This is a half-acre lot subdivision, water, no sewer. It was excluded in the PUD. However, we do plan on having amenities, but we're going to put them in the next phase next to the pond, in the middle of the subdivision.
Ah, I see.
Excellent. Any other questions from commissioners? All right, we do have one member of the audience signed up to speak. Jennifer Coneman, and I apologize if I got the last name.
Oh, you did good. You did good.
Excellent.
My name's Jennifer Coneman. I live at 12601 South Council Road. And my question is, on this, it says southwest 119th Street and west of South Council. That plot of land is east of South Council. If I'm not, I live west of South Council. And so I just, I want to make sure that's clarified, unless I'm misunderstanding how you're looking at it. But it says west of South Council, and that plot of land is east of Council Road.
Oh, it's east of Council.
It is east of Council.
I'm not sure what, if that's in the staff report or where that's at, but.
Uh, under the.
It's on the header.
On the agenda. It's a typo.
Yeah, but it's east of Council.
So it's a typo. Sounds like we don't have to, is there anything that we need to do in the record to ensure that that's clear, so that we're?
Yeah, that they're building east and not on my, don't come over here.
That's definitely reflected in every, in every other aspect of the report. It's reflected that it is indeed east of Council.
East, okay. So I couldn't find anything that showed east, and so I just, I, we, those of three of us on that street wanted to make sure it was understood, the development was going east of Council, not west of Council.
Great.
Okay.
And I don't believe, nothing else that we need to do officially to correct that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Is anyone else who wanted to be heard on item six? Great, I think we're ready for a motion.
Is that me? I want approval. Item number six, C 7453.
Commissioner Powers has moved approval of C 7453. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. And that motion is approved. We are now on to item eight.
This is case number C 7455, a final plat of the enclave of Hefner Crossing, Phase 1, located south of East Hefner Road and west of North Kelly Avenue.
Again, Kendall Dillon, Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. This is Phase 2. This plat, again, conforms to the approved PUD as well as the preliminary plat, three stat, or TE's that we're in agreement with, so happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval.
Excellent. And I believe we have, any questions from commissioners regarding this item? And I believe we have some, is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? We'd love to hear from you. Please come up to the microphone. You have, you have five minutes, and please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jerome Harris, Jr., 10905 North Lincoln Boulevard, Oakdale City. And I reside in the neighborhood across the street from this development. This is the person notice that I've gotten of this, but increasingly, over the past few years, there have been things that have been added around this residential neighborhood. This in particular is one of those that are driving the animals into the neighborhood, along with some others that have already happened that have done the same thing. Not only that, I, I don't see on here where there is an entrance/exit except to Hefner Road that could be allotted for this, which is going to increase traffic. And in the 40 years that I've been in that neighborhood, we have had one child killed on that street already with the traffic that's on it, and we're going to dump more traffic onto it. Plus, we're adding, I assume these are apartment-type residences that are going to be added here and just boxing in this neighborhood with things that are not, not normally in the residential part of a neighborhood. In other words, more apartments that are boxing in this neighborhood that are concerning to me, especially the traffic inflow and outflow. I don't think it's good for that neighborhood nor the children in it, and I think that's a concern that ought to be dealt with.
And it appears that this is the first phase of a much larger development in PUD 1801. So, is it two, the second phase? Okay. So, yeah, there's going to be.
Yeah, that was my other concern, was that this says Phase 1. That to me says it's a Phase 2. Maybe a Phase 3 and 4, I don't know.
Yep.
But we're continually boxing in that neighborhood, moving more traffic out onto Hefner and running the animals out of these areas that are being developed. So.
Mr. Harris, is it? Is that correct?
Harris, Jerome Harris.
Harris. There are not, this is an R1, single-family residential development.
What, what, what exactly is that? Is that an apartment? Is that a house?
No, no. It's what you think of, a single-family residential house, a house, a yard, you know? There's, there's not multifamily or apartment.
This doesn't look like, this doesn't look like a house, housing area.
But that is what a residential plat looks like. Those are lots.
And almost lots, will they be built homes or apartments?
Yes, single-family homes.
Yes, only single-family homes are allowed. No apartments are allowed, I believe.
Not even duplexes.
The way this is built out on here, 115 units, it didn't look like, it looked like apartments.
They're not.
Okay.
They're, they're single-family homes, not even a duplex.
Okay. But is there, is there something that, that shows where the entrance/exit would be? Because the only one that I can see would be Hefner.
In this phase, that's correct.
And you, and you're adding traffic to our already area that has.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. But there's not a road there.
There's 106th Street.
It hasn't connected yet. So, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, it looks to me, and I'll let staff comment if there's something else we should be aware of, but it, it looks to me like the primary exit would be onto Hefner Road. It looks like there's some connectivity to other neighborhoods, but the primary way out would be through Hefner.
And the entrance also, right?
Yes.
Which is.
There's, I mean, entrance and exits through other neighborhoods, but the primary method, I'm, I'm certain, would be through.
Yeah, there, there's one at 106.
And I don't know how.
106, and then.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be great. There we go.
106 already has its own entrance and exit.
Oh, okay, yeah, see, it's an actual road.
Which is on the west side.
And then the next one would be a connection to another non-existing road, to 102nd, once you start going south in that development. So, yeah.
Mr. Harris, any other concerns? The traffic? And we, I think we, we addressed the issue about being concerned about it being something other than single-family homes. Any other concerns for the commission?
Nothing other than that, other than the displacement of those animals that are being driven into the neighborhoods across the street. They don't have anywhere else to go. And when they start developing that land, that's where they'll, that's where they'll naturally come. They're already doing it.
And that's understandably frustrating, but we appreciate you coming down and, and visiting with us. I will say that at, at this point of the process, the zoning has already been done. So it's already been determined that the owner of this property has the ability to build single-family homes here. So the question for the commission is, their recommended layout of how to build those homes is what we are addressing now. They are recommending that, that, that there be an entrance and exit off of, off of Hefner, and we can now have that debate. We have staff here who can help us address the, the traffic issue and certainly can hear from the developer about that as well. But thank you, Mr. Harris. You want to address that before we?
Sure. Just for clarification, again, certainly it is a single-family. Again, I'll remind the commission that it's a duplicate of the approved PUD as well as preliminary plat. In regards to access, it's a little bit hard to tell on the staff report, but this whole quarter section minus the parcel on the south is one development. Phase 1 is currently, you all have already approved the final plat of it. It sits to the east. It has two connection points onto Kelly, and then 105th Street that you see on this plat that stubs to the southeast connects. So the whole subdivision has an access onto Hefner, two onto Kelly, and then you do have the street stubs, but currently there's nothing for those to stub into. And there was a lot of discussion with preliminary plat and zoning on, you know, exactly the neighborhood to the, to the west protested us, they don't want those stubs. Currently, they're still part of our proposal, but there's a requirement for crash gates. But all total, you've got three access points to this development, so.
And those, those access points that eventually hook up to Kelly will be completed as part of this phase?
By the time this phase is built, all three access points will be in place. Because the one, that's Phase 1 that you see on the east, so it's in progress right now, which provides two access points to Kelly. When this phase is constructed here, it will tie to Hefner, and it will also connect to Phase 1, so that you have access to all three.
But to be clear, if you live in the, in the area that we are voting to plat today, the most likely common entrance would be going on Hefner, not driving through the neighborhood to exit out to Kelly.
Unless they want to go south on Kelly.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, but most likely.
In the TE's, there is a requirement, TE2, to a, a connection to the east development prior to issuance of 31 certificates of occupancy. So there is a requirement for.
There be.
Yeah, for them to tie together.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Any questions, comment, any, anyone else wanting to be heard on this item?
Williamson, maybe, tell us a little bit about the common area. It, it looks to me from your.
Plot plan that there's a fairly generous common area provision for.
Yeah, there's a lot of common area in the whole plat. I can't remember exactly. Like I say, you can see 3.37 there immediately to the east, and we've got a significant common area further south that I think is where the amenities will end up being in the next phase.
If that's anything that helps provide habitat for.
Right.
As far as. Nature and animals.
Yeah, there's a lot of open space that will remain.
I've seen a lot worse, yes. So I, I try to give you some credit here.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? This is, this is my ward, and I will just say quickly, I'm sensitive to Mr. Harris's statement. I think, you know, it's unfortunate, it's an unfortunate aspect of development that we end up displacing animals and that that does, that can create problems in the, in the immediate aftermath for nearby communities, and that's unfortunate. I do also share the concern of, we're always worried about the roads and an unfortunate, and here in Oklahoma where there's how many surface miles of roads that are still, and so many that, that are still in need of, of expansion and better care. Unfortunately, development, excuse me, infrastructure follows development, not the other way around in Oklahoma City. And so the decision to allow homes to be built here has been made, and at this point, the choice is, do we, where do we, where do we allow the people who are, who are, who are going to be living in this community, where do we allow them to get access? And so it is consistent with our ordinances to allow this access on the nearest arterial street, which is Hefner. So while I, I am sympathetic to the concerns and hope that by bringing more people, that makes it more desirable for the city to be able to address that issue of expanding the street and making it easier to alleviate those traffic issues. So I, I know that that's not a satisfactory answer, and I do apologize, but it is where we, it is where we currently are in the city of Oklahoma City. Are there any other comments, questions? And I think we're ready for a motion. Mr. Harris? Well, we, we gave you your five minutes to, to speak, but I'm happy to visit with you as well after this, after the commission meeting as well. Please, go ahead. I'll give you one minute.
We talked about the displacement of the animals, but we're not, we're not just talking about the animals having to move to another place. We're talking about those animals coming into the neighborhoods that are already inhabited, that, that poses a danger with snakes, coons, and a number of, what do you call those dogs?
Coyotes.
Coyotes. And they are increasing in number. I'm out there with my dog at night, I know when they come, and when they come, they're bringing babies with them. And this is being moved into the neighborhood with another development on that side of the high, of Hefner. That increases that likelihood that they will travel from there to the other end of that neighborhood, and the only way for them to go is straight across that highway. to the other end of that neighborhood, and the only way for them to go is straight across that highway.
Unfortunately, I, again, I, I apologize that that, for that set of circumstances.
And for me, to be able to say that there are three entrances that will be there for this, I can't tell from there what those entrances are, and if they're going to relieve any of the traffic on Hefner, that will be increased by this, this plat. And yes, it's already approved. So I, you know, I feel like I'm wasting my time even coming here. See what I'm saying?
I do, and I, and I apologize. The process is confusing, and, and I, so I apologize about those feelings. I can tell you that, again, at a separate hearing prior to today, the determination was made to allow this development to occur. So the, the owner of that property already has the right to build here, to build single-family homes here.
To the public on that?
Yes, there were. State statute does require that, within 300 feet. At this point, I think we're ready for a motion unless there's further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of C-7455 with the three TEs.
Commissioner Hinkle has moved to approve C-7455. Is there a second? And it's been seconded by Commissioner Powers, and please cast your votes. And the motion carries. And again, my, my offer still stands. I'm, I'm more than happy to visit, visit with you, Mr. Harris. We're now ready for item 12.
This is KC-7457, preliminary plat of University Place, located south of northwest 115th Street and west of Northwestern Avenue.
Um, before we move on to this item, Mr. Tal, would you please, um, get with Mr. Harris and show him where the other access points are, so that he can just see visually how that will work?
No problem.
Thank you. I think we're ready to hear from the applicant on 12.
Good afternoon, Steve Rollins, Arch Engineering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road, representing the applicant. This is, uh, 4.53 acres of a two-family residential. We're showing 18 duplex lots, which would be 36 units. Uh, there was a comment, an objection in the staff report from the fire marshal regarding, um, having too many units with one entrance. Uh, 30 units is what's allowed per the code. Uh, I think this is also what TE1 in the staff report is, is referring to. Um, we're kind of locked in with existing development to the south, existing homes. The property to the north and to the east of us is undeveloped. Uh, but the property is too narrow to do any kind of loop or anything like that through the property to, um, create another entrance. Our proposal would be, uh, to extend a stub street to the north, to the undeveloped property to the north, which would create the possibility of a future connection and also eliminate two units, uh, which puts us at four units over what we would allow. So, if that would be a possibility, we would, we'd be, uh, we'd like to do that, so.
Okay.
If there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any immediate questions? I'd love for staff to respond to his comments and address the fire issue as well.
So it's a little, I'm Jared Martin with Development Services. It's a little bit of a discrepancy. The, uh, the subregs call for no more than 30 lots. There's more than 30 units, but there's not more than 30 lots.
Yeah, it's 18 lots, right?
It's 18 lots.
Yeah, so we're still within the...
So technically, we meet the subregs, the way it is, yeah.
Great. Now, as far as the northern entrance, are you still wanting to include the northern, the street stubs?
If, if we're required to do it, we'll, we'll definitely do it. If it's not, then we would prefer, obviously, to, to have the two additional units, but we're willing to do whatever we need to do.
I wondered why it wasn't required, but...
For the subregs, it's not required, so I think he, he meets it the way it is. I mean, I think it was desirable from a fire perspective to, to have additional access because there's more, more units than that, but the way the subregs are written with lots instead of units, he meets that already the way it is, yeah.
Um, we do have a, a strong, um, belief, uh, and that's been consistently, um, discussed here about encouraging connectivity. Um, and so I, I have a preference for keeping the northern, um, access, but I'm open to hearing from other commissioners and, and staff certainly about that.
I have a different preference as well.
And I would agree. I, I, we've got to get away from, um, allowing these just sort of block by block, one, you know, with a cul-de-sac at the end of it. If we're going to have a, a serious process of, of connectivity and policy of connectivity, which I think we do, then, you know, it can't be circumvented, and I don't mean that in a negative way. I'm not saying you're trying to get around it, but, um, by simply the development of smaller pieces of property, you know, there's got to be a way for them to connect. So I, I also would favor that connectivity to the north.
Jared, if, if I'm correct, what you're saying is if this were a single-family plat of development, then it would be required. But it, because of the, the funny wording, uh, which is probably unintentional in the subdivision regulations, I'm guessing, uh, it's a bit of a, uh, bit of a loophole.
So we would need to create TE3 that essentially, uh, required connectivity to the north. Well, that would, I would support that. Any questions, comments from commissioners? And also, is there anyone wanting to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion that would include the addition of TE3 requiring, um, access to the north.
I'll move approval of item number 12, CE, C-7457, with the inclusion of a, a third TE requiring, uh, a stub to the north.
Great. Um, Commissioner Powers has moved approval of C-7457 with the added TE. Um, it's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. I think we're now ready for item 13.
Yes, this is KC-7435, final plat of Whistle Creek, Phase One, located south of northwest 164th Street and east of Northwestern Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mark Zitzan with Johnson &amp; Associates, addresses 1 East Sheridan Avenue. This is a continuation of the Whistle Creek development. Uh, it's slightly different than the preliminary plat that was approved, it has six less lots. Uh, our engineering plans and studies are in, uh, and under review for Public Works. Um, so we'd like to add one TE to address that. That's why there have been a couple continuance on, continuances on this one. But, uh, prior to the meeting, we were able to work with Mr. Lodge and Mr. Martin to get an acceptable TE to move this forward. Uh, so TE3, we would, uh, seek to add. Final plan approval will be held by OKC Public Works until conditional letter of map revision approval is received from FEMA. I will provide that in writing to staff. But other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't think we have any questions. Very any comments on, on that TE language?
No, that TE language is acceptable for the final plat. We just want to have it memorialized in the minutes that we, that we will not approve those plans until we receive the conditional letter of map revision approval from FEMA.
Excellent. Any questions for Mark from the commission? Is there anyone wanting to be heard on this item? I think that we are good for a motion at this point. And this is my ward, and I am, and am in support. Um, I think we're ready for a motion with the added, um, TE as read into the record.
Um, Mr. Zitzan, can you provide that language in writing to staff, to all of... Um, if so, I'll move approval, item number 13, C-7435, with the addition of a third TE, which he'll provide in writing, indicating that final plan approval will be held, uh, by public works until, uh, the final map amendment is received from FEMA. Is that correct?
It is a conditional letter of map revision or a clomer.
Let the record reflect that.
Excellent. Motion before the body is to approve C-7435 with the additional TE as read into the record correctly. Um, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Hinkle votes yes, and the motion carries. We're ready for item 14.
Item 14 is case number C-7456, preliminary plat of East Lake, uh, located south of northeast 150th Street and west of North Post Road with variance, uh, to section 5.3.1.1.5 of the subdivision regulations.
My name's Charles Allen, I'm with Allen Engineering on behalf of the applicant. Uh, this is a little bit different from, from the PUD that we did. When we did the PUD, there were 92 lots, uh, three acre, uh, three acres in size. During the PUD process, we found that the water system in this area wasn't really adequate to provide water to this development. So we've redrawn it, uh, we've worked with, uh, the traffic department to move the entrance north, so we've got better site distance. Uh, we've reduced it down to 60 lots. These are all over one acre in size. We have a couple TEs I'd like to discuss, I guess. Let's see, TE3, we're actually, the developer's going to require individual sprinkler systems for the residents, since we do not have water. TE4, we'd like a variance for the connectivity to the south and to the west. To the west is the, uh, Guinness's project, it's a, uh, home for boys. To the south, uh, there's actually that Blue Line stream that runs through there that's really prohibitive. We'll actually probably be reducing the number of lots on that south. We're probably not going to cross the, cross the creek with the road. It's going to be several hundred, several hundred thousand dollars to make that crossing. So, uh, by the time we come back with final plat, it's most likely the lots 10, 11, and 12 will be extended, their property lines will extend south. So, uh, we don't really see a need for connectivity to the south or the west. Uh, the last TE I'd like to talk about is, uh, TE6 about sidewalks. Uh, we're not opposed to putting in sidewalks. Uh, we'd just like to have the same, I guess, arrangement that the Falls to the east of us have. There are no sidewalks there. Their sidewalks have been deferred until Post Road is approved, and also, uh, northeast 150th Street. I'm not sure how that mechanism actually works. I'm not familiar either. But there, there are no sidewalks. There, part of the PUD, and we use the same language in our PUD that was in the Falls, and that, that was going to be deferred until there were improvements to Post Road. So I guess we'd like to be in that, that same boat. And then also with the, uh, turnpikes, looking to put an interchange at Post Road, I think it might be a little premature for us to build sidewalks that likely would not be in the right place. Uh, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, and this is, this is my ward. It's the Ward 7 Day, uh, for sure. Um, and I, I'm in agreement with the applicant on the, um, obviously, we don't need the variance in, mentioned in TE3, but I'm in agreement with the applicant on the, uh, variant, granting the variance on TE4. I am curious from staff about their thoughts on that requirement, waiting till Post Road's developed?
Uh, maybe Jared can talk about the, I'm, I'm not sure if the, the subdivision to the east did a fee in lieu, um, or if that's an option here. Or if you know, Jared?
I'd have to, I'd have to look back at that one and see what, see what they did on that one. That was a few years ago. I know we have done, we have done quite a few fee-in-lues, uh, in the past, but I'm not sure if that's how they did that one or not, or if there was some stipulation in their PUD that, that allowed them not to do it. Um, this PUD has the language that I've included in the staff report about the sidewalks, doesn't say anything about timing. Um, so I'd have to look at the other one to see if it did have something about timing in there.
So theoretically, it could be later when, when he brings in the sidewalks? Because we're in agreement that he wants to add, that you want to add the sidewalks, you just want to wait until...
We don't, we're not objecting to adding sidewalks. It's whether do we try to put them closer to Post Road? Then Post Road gets widened, they get torn out. Or do we put them up by the proper, the 50-foot right-of-way line? Uh, which is quite a bit of terrain difference there. I guess my developer doesn't, the developer doesn't want to spend a lot of money on sidewalks, first of all, that may never be used at this point, but are going to in the future be ripped out. So he, you know, it's kind of an insult, I suppose, that he spends a lot of money on a sidewalk and then improvements are made and it's torn out and the sidewalk's put in a totally different place. So, I, I just, we just want to be in the same, you know, the same position as the Falls is to our east.
So, so I guess if, if, if the subdivision of the east was allowed to do fee-in-lue of, you could say something to the effect that a fee-in-lue of could be done, or if it's something that's in their PUD that allows them to, if it's within our ability to do so, we could administratively amend this PUD to include the same requirement.
But that wouldn't have anything to do with what actually we would need to take on the, on the plat today, on the preliminary plat today, though.
It'd be really more of a zoning issue than a, than a plat issue at that point.
Let, let me ask, uh, do I have it correct that sidewalks normally would have to be installed before building permits were pulled?
So...
Anywhere in the subdivision, isn't that true?
So if it's a, if it's a sidewalk that the developer's responsible for, which would be, uh, sectioned line roads or common areas, those would have to be installed as required before, um, before really they, they would get the ability to either pull permits if they've, um, if they've... So there's, you know, for a plat, there's two mechanisms to get it approved, to get it, to get it filed and then start pulling permits. They can construct all the infrastructure, which would include those sidewalks, or they can do some sort of a bond or letter of credit, and then they get to start a little earlier on the, on those, uh, building permits, but then they wouldn't get a CO until they've completed the required infrastructure from the developer's perspective. So if they're required to do those sidewalks, they couldn't get a CO on a home until those were built.
So this really is this, uh, thing we need to decide? That we can't say, okay, well, we'll just approve preliminary, we'll deal with this in final, because this is something that's going to be done between now and final, normally?
Well, it would, it would, it wouldn't be a requirement until the final plat. So that's, it would be shown on construction plans with the final plat. So it, it could be decided at final plat as far as, as far as that goes. Because they wouldn't, they wouldn't be required to show that until the construction plans came in with the final plats.
So, uh, wanted to point out that, uh, this is actually, the, the PUD actually requires the sidewalks. So it's not, it's not something that we can, that's my understanding, my understanding of PUD 1860. So that would have been the appropriate time to actually, um, have this discussion, maybe. I don't know that we could necessarily, may, maybe theoretically, one could delay the, the installation of the sidewalks until, you know, the, uh, the end of the subdivision, but that's really not going to save that much time. A subdivision like this would build out relatively quickly. It's a small subdivision, um, so.
PUD 1548, um, section 9.6.3, sidewalks will be added when Post Road and northeast 50th Street are improved. That's how they did.
But if it wasn't...
Going to the east.
But, but if, but this is the plat language, this is the plat, though.
Right.
So if the zoning doesn't require it, how can we make that requirement in the plat? I guess is my question. Can we add that requirement to delay that?
It depends on what the PUD's, I don't have the, the PUD language in front of me, but I think if the PUD, I'm assuming it just says the sidewalks are required. We don't typically go into more detail as, on the timing of that in the sub, or, excuse me, in the PUD language.
It, it also says, uh, they will not be required at the northwest corner of the site and south on Post, where it can be demonstrated that pedestrian safety will be compromised.
And that's in there, the, the PUD on the east side there?
Yeah, on that 1548.
So in, in the staff report, um, under, under subdivision regulations, under number 10, about the fifth paragraph down is the section, I basically just copied that right out of the PUD. So that's what the PUD says regarding sidewalks.
We, the, the plat would have to comply with the underlying zoning, so, you know, if that's what's required in the, in the zoning, in the PUD, doesn't sound like we have any more wiggle room.
Our, our PUD says the same as the Falls. Sidewalks will be added when Post Road and northeast 150th Street are improved.
What section is that in?
9.12 of the PUD.
I'd have to look at that.
Thank you. Tell us about your project.
We are seeking approval of our special application for a sit-down drinking establishment in that special design district.
Excellent.
And that's, we just need the special application. We've turned in all of our documents for permitting, design approval. We just need this approval.
Great. This is Ward Six. Commissioner Gobean, you want to start off our conversation?
Sure. Let's get my mic on. First of all, is there anyone else that wishes to speak about this case? Okay, we do have a speaker.
We do. Any comments, any questions for the applicant before we hear from, before we move forward? Okay, well, happy to hear from someone from the audience.
My name's Mark Wymer and 309 Northwest Ninth. My wife and I own the property just adjacent to the proposed property, the wood bar is. And the staff report says that that's manufacturing, that's office building. It's been a lawyer's building for 20-plus years. So that is an office building. Before that, it was office building for probably another 20-plus years. One que, I noticed in the, what was submitted, that they talk about games. Just out of curiosity, I'd want to know what games. We have very large windows on that side. And I'm not here to, to stand in the way of that. We've seen how much has come in and it's really improved the area midtown. And we just have some concerns, but we're all for, you know, the development of this. It's been a vacant lot. It's been a eyesore for a number of years. So we're glad that someone wants to address it and do something for it, with it. The other thing, the other concern, as you said, infrastructure follows development. So I'm not going to get into all the, the infrastructure concerns I have. But that is an alley that runs to the, directly to the west. And an establishment uses that for a drive-through. And the cars will be lined up to, all the way to Ninth Street at any given time, depending upon the time of day. It's a restaurant. And there's also service vehicles. The alley has broken down. Our sewer line has collapsed at one time and we had to replace that. It's just not made for the traffic and the way the vehicles through there. But I notice in their, their design that there is a, a door into the alley from this bar. I would hope that would only be a service door, not a, a door for a point of ingress into it from an alleyway. Because there's already more traffic than that, in my opinion, than that alley can, can already handle. So that, those are my concerns, but we welcome, we welcome the development of what's next to us. So that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, to be clear, I want to be clear. I'm not necessarily agreeing with the fact that, uh, infrastructure follows development. I just know that that's the way things are here in Oklahoma City.
I didn't take it as you were, okay?
Do we want to hear from, can we hear from the applicant about those, those issues? Yes, please.
So to speak about the alleyway and the, the door on what would be the west facade, that is strictly a service entrance. It's not for public access. That would be for employee entrance. And if we get deliveries during the day, which would utilize the alley for what it was intended for anyway. It's not for direct public access. You'll notice on the south facade, there are two doors that, that go out onto our courtyard. That's to be accessed off Harvey through our walkway. So the entrance is actually to be addressed from Harvey as opposed to the alley anyway.
Okay.
Regarding games, we're talking about, they got away with, did away with lawn darts, so we won't do that. But we'll be doing like cornhole things of that nature, simple lawn games. So nothing, no kicking of balls, tetherball, volleyball, things of that nature.
Does that answer your?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Gobean?
Well, I haven't had the, uh, chance to meet with the applicant, but I appreciate your, your thoughts and, and comments here. Um, this is midtown. It's a consistent use and development, similar to many other, uh, businesses that are operating there. And we appreciate your concerns and I have no issues with it. I support the application.
We're excited about getting to do the project down there and just being a part of that continued growth in the area.
I'm excited to go. So I think it's, sounds interesting. Any other comments, questions? I think we're ready for motion.
I think I'd ready, uh, would like to make a motion to approve item number SP 565 with, sorry, there aren't a TEs, are there?
No, 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 the special permit.
As, as submitted.
And the motion by Commissioner Gobean is to recommend approval of SP 565. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And it is approved. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
And we're on to item 19.
This is PUD 1901, application to rezone 11401 Chester Street from AA to PUD 1902.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Court Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, the application before you is actually going to reduce the density. It could otherwise be built in an AA district, if you can believe that. Uh, this would allow for three lots to be developed. It's a family compound type of development. The reason for the PUD is so that we don't have to drive, drag a street all the way through it, thereby removing most of the trees that would exist along that stretch. So it would allow all three lots to be accessed off of private drive. So the, the way to accomplish that is through this PUD. So there are three TEs, all of which we agree to. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is my, thank you. Uh, this is my ward and I am fully in support and don't have any questions. Any questions from commissioners? Is there anyone from the audience wanting to be heard on this item? I think we're ready for motion on item 19.
I'll move approval of item number 19, PUD 1902. Did you say you were in agreement with the TEs?
I'm sorry?
Did you say you were in agreement with the TEs?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So, with the TEs.
Commissioner Powers has made the motion to recommend approval of PUD 1902 with the three TEs included. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle. Please cast your votes. And it is approved. We're, item, we are ready for item 20.
This is SPOD 1417, application to rezone 1609 Northwest 47th Street from R1.
Hello, Drew Cunningham, offices at 324 North Robinson Avenue, on behalf of the applicant. This is a property that was built in 1947 before it was brought into Oklahoma City. It's been, its use has been consistently used in some form or fashion of commercial uses over the years. Um, this SPOD application is meant just to bring it into, uh, rezone it with a base district of office, light office, after a lot of good discussions with Ms. Powers. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. This is Ward Two. Commissioner Powers, you want to begin our conversation?
Um, I'll be happy to do that. And Mr. Cunningham, who was just delightful to work with, and I sat down and kind of wrestled through this, um, I'm not sure I completely agree or am ready to, to sign off on the idea that it's been continuously used since 1947 for some commercial purpose. Nonetheless, it is what it is now. This is very problematic piece of property. It doesn't really have access to a street. What's called even a private street here is really no more than a driveway. Uh, it is surrounded by residential uses, some of them better maintained than others, um, including a, a fabulous sort of modern structure right on, uh, 47th at Blackwalder. Uh, and some, some development that has kind of been encouraged by that. And the area is sort of, is, you know, I would say on the upswing, let's say.
I, I agree.
So the idea of institutionalizing a use here that would be industrial was a no-go for me. But as we talked about it, I, I also understand that this piece of property is what it is. And, um, while I would love to see the whole area there that's vacant and around it, and this piece of property consolidated and developed in some kind of residential way, we've allowed for that if it should happen. But at the same time, we're trying to acknowledge what it is. The current owner really is only interested in selling the property. He has a tenant in the, in the building. He wanted to, uh, at least legalize the use that's there now, which is a wedding and event, not center, but just a warehouse and, um, like a staging company. So, uh, what we've done here will allow for that. It will allow for some uses that might encourage redevelopment of the property and consolidation, possibly in the future, and development in a way that would make sense. So, um, as I said, Mr. Cunningham was, was, uh, great to work with. We were able to wrestle through it. And the result is what you see before you.
Excellent. Well, I thought it was going to be an interesting, uh, because it's an interesting area. It really is, that neighborhood. But it is, it, I think it is on the upswing. And I, I was thinking of that modern house nearby, which looks cool, but it's definitely an interesting thing to, to be in that particular, uh, neighborhood. Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? That too, I think, speaks volumes because in the past, even residential development of a greater density than R1 has, has elicited some real response in the area. So.
True.
And by the way, I stopped and spoke with some of the neighbors when I was out there prowling around looking at the property. And they were okay with the use that is existing there now. So that is, is allowed to be maintained in this SPOD.
Excellent. I think we're ready for motion.
I'll move approval of item number 16, SPOD 1417. No, I said item number 16. It's item number 20.
Commissioner Powers has moved to recommend approval of SPOD 1417. It has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes when available. And it is approved. Good luck on your project.
Thank you.
Ready for item 21.
This is SPOD 1418, application to rezone 2942 Southwest 13th Street from I-1.
Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon. My name is Victor Ortega and I live at 11417 Roxborough Avenue here in Oklahoma City. And I am here representing Mr. Eliazzar Rodarti, who is wanting to, uh, to apply or has applied for a building erection at such address. Uh, this address is currently vacant. It's an open lot. And throughout the years, there has been many other demolitions that have now opened up the field to where it possesses an opportunity for him to have a, a building erected that is going to have a, um, that dimensions would be 50 by 100 by 20 foot tall, resembling some, some other buildings within the area. Uh, at first, he had to go through a, a previous approval by the Riverside Commission. And that has been approved. Uh, that happened the last, um, uh, 7th of July. And now we have the appointment to attend to this meeting to see if this could also pass. Um, he has already bought the building and he has pretty much, you know, all the materials necessary. But the primary use for which he had to go through the other, uh, motions was due to the, the usage of the building. Uh, in this case, he is currently working and he owns his, his own business as, uh, Road Assistance. And he is planning to primarily, um, use this building for his own usage or personal usage, which is, uh, going to include, uh, personal equipment repair, uh, and not into the public. And because of that, he, um, he's really encouraged, you know, to, to, to proceed with this buildup.
Thank you. And I, I will note that, that this is recommended for approval by the River Design, Riverfront Design Committee. Um, this is Ward Six. So Commissioner Gobean, you want to start our conversation?
Sure. Uh, well, as you noted, the scenic river overlay design district approval helps situations. There was a number of points raised in there that they've, they've clearly satisfied themselves. Um, I was wondering if you could talk about dumps, the one thing I don't see anything is dumpster location or dumpster screening on the site plan. How's that been addressed?
Uh, in that regard, he actually has set up a meeting to follow up with his architect. Uh, the architect will make some modifications. Uh, part of it would include, uh, create a single, uh, curb approach along the Brookline Avenue, uh, instead of having two entries. Uh, they wanted to consolidate it on one. And I believe that the length of that would be up to 30 feet. That would enable, uh, two vehicles to go forward and back out. And then the other change would be to, uh, have a sidewalk, which I think it's, it's not, it's not displayed into this print, but it would be in the, into the architectural plan, uh, including some green areas and all the, the adequate, uh, marks, uh, for up to five parking spots. Uh, the front would actually remain the same. And it's only, uh, it has only been requested to make that modification along Brookline.
Okay.
What about the dumpsters?
So you will meet the screening requirements and there, there will, you are saying there will be a dumpster that needs to be accommodated on the site plan?
Yes, yes, once they finish that. Um, it's going to be towards the back alley, which is going to be, uh, probably along the, the 60, oh six mark, uh, north of the building, which is the bottom on the picture.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
And, and then the sidewalks were my other question, which you, you touched on there. So that, this site plan doesn't, I think, show it graphically, but you are saying there will be sidewalks constructed as part of it.
Correct. Yes. There is a, a newer, uh, there, there would be a newer architectural plan that will reflect those changes. And once that, you know, becomes available, we'll turn it in as well with the application. Um, one, one more thing that I wanted to mention is, is that there was previously an old home that got demolished. And he's wanting to utilize the same, uh, city services, such as water, gas, and electric that are already there with the previous, with the existing address. So.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? Okay, there is. Uh, I have no further questions, though. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Open it up here.
Hi, my name's Henry Allen. I live at 2933 Southwest 13th, right across the street from where this gentleman is wanting to put a warehouse. I've lived there since my parents bought it in 1939. And I've been there since I was born. And we don't want no warehouse. It's a residential area. You can go down May Avenue and get even some res, uh, you know, nice place. There's one on 13th and May. It's a body shop. You can't even get down the streets for them. There, there, there are cars everywhere. We, we, we live in a residential area. We don't, only one working on cars all night. And, uh, it's, 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 I mean, it's just right across the street from me. I can throw a rock over there. It's been vacant for years. And we just don't need nothing down there. We, we want to be left alone. Uh, I got nothing against this man or nothing like that, but, uh, we just been there a long time. And we, we don't want no warehouse working on cars at night and people parking everywhere and doing what they want to, storing what they want to. It's, uh, we'd just like for him to go someplace else. Nothing personal.
Well, that's understandable. Could I have your name one more time? I'm sorry.
Huh?
Could I have your name one more time?
Henry Allen.
Mr. Allen. Well, I appreciate that. And, and I do want to, want to say, while, and I understand the not wanting to, uh, be across the street from, um, you know, cars and, and warehouse. I certainly understand that. So please don't take my statement as, as a lack of empathy for that situation. Um, but, but as you can see on the screen, that, that lot is actually currently zoned industrial now. So I-
Yeah, there, excuse me. The reason it's zoned industrial, that's where they was going to put the, uh, big fantastic gambling hall. And all that went through and, uh, they bought all that right in there and was going to put casino in there. And something fell through and different people bought different parts of that. That's why it's zoned for what it is now. It's always been a residential area. I've, I've been living there, uh, since I was born. And, and we lived there, my folks bought it like in 39. And I have two houses there and four lots on that corner. And his is 20 feet across the street. Uh, I'd like for him to just go someplace else. And, uh, we don't need a warehouse right there. Like I say, we have four lots on that corner, two houses. And the value of our house is going to definitely go down. And we just don't, don't need it. I mean, and there's, there's no other ones down there except up on May Avenue, which is one block east. And you can't get down the street for cars and, and, uh, they're everywhere at the body shops and stuff down there. So we don't need another problem, uh, that I can see. I mean, he can go wherever his, you know, someplace else for as I'm concerned. I'm just really perturbed with it. But I, that don't mean nothing. But, uh, it's just the way I feel. I, I hope you don't pass it. I really don't. Would you like to have one in, would you, one of y'all like to have a garage next door to you?
If we don't.
No. I don't want one either.
If we don't pass it, by the way.
I want to sleep at night. I don't cars starting up, working on their car all night. Uh, doing whatever they want to all night. And you, you put this in and, and that's what's going to happen. Uh, we just don't need it.
And, and again, I, I definitely, uh, I hear you, Mr. Allen. And, but the, the challenge for us is currently, the, he has a right because this is an industrial, and I, and I appreciate you sharing that history of the circumstances that led to it being zoned industrial. But the bottom line is, he does have the authority, um, have the right at this point because it's zoned industrial. I, I believe that the warehouse usage is already there. This SPOD gives us the flexibility to be able to put some limitations on there that could make this, um, more, uh, acceptable to the neighborhood. Um, maybe it would, I mean, is there anything that could be done? I mean, and I know that I'm putting you on the spot. But is there anything offhand that you think you would want, that we could do, um, with the warehouse use to maybe make that a little bit more acceptable to you and the neighborhood, knowing that he already does have the right to do that?
No, it says-
This commission could vote no right now, and he would still be able to build a warehouse.
Yeah. Well, it says right in the paperwork, they're going to work on cars. They're going to have personal storage. In other words, they can do just anything they want to. Well, if, if they move next door to you, would you like it? No. Would you want them to pass it? No.
I, I understand.
Ain't nothing but a problem.
These are valid concerns that I would, I would absolutely have myself. The thing that, that we've, that makes us look at this is, we're actually putting more limitations on this. So this specifically says that all repair work will be conducted inside the buildings. All vehicles and equipment would be stored inside the buildings. So that's something that this application is actually imposing on this that wouldn't be there otherwise, uh, which, which is-
Would you, would you like for him to come on your neighborhood and build one next to you? No.
Well, if I live next to a vacant lot.
You're telling me it's already passed. So really, I just wasted my time coming down here. I've been there 40, 50 years. And he comes up here and buys property and puts whatever the hell he wants in there. And I gotta choke it down. That ain't right. You're sitting here telling me that you done passed it. I've been sitting here for three hours for nothing then. I, this ain't right.
Sir, we haven't passed anything today.
This ain't right, man.
This has been I-1 for-
I got nothing against that man. Don't even know him. But I don't, I, I don't, I don't need him for a neighbor. Working on his cars all night long, uh, and anything he wants to do, as long as you guys pass it.
Long as it's indoor.
He, he'd come out there and fart, fart crackers like to do all of fourth of July, work on their cars.
I just want to clarify one thing. So what we're doing today is we're making a recommendation to city council. So this is not a final decision. It will go forward to city council in about six weeks. So you have the opportunity to speak to your council person, um, regarding this recommendation.
Well, the only reason I didn't bring my, my lawyer with me, saving open-heart surgery, I would have done it a little better. I'm not too good at this. But, uh, when this is over with, I got to live with this rest of my life. I didn't, you know, I said, you guys are supposed to stick up for people.
Our question to you then is-
Yes, ma'am.
-whether there is anything that can be done to the property under this application that would make it less intrusive, that would in any way mitigate the, uh, impact that you feel it will have on you?
Not having the entrance to my school. He's got his entrance going to your door. At least if you didn't have to see that part.
For instance?
Has he got his entrance to his, um, facility facing my house? I didn't even look at it. I just looked at the-
I'm not sure where your house is. Which of your, which of these, uh, surrounding properties is yours?
Looks like the entrance is off of Brookline.
The what, ma'am?
She's trying to get her entrance to your house, to your doors. That, that square right there, by the mouse, is his.
Okay.
This one? So on the, you, you live on the north? I'm so bad at this.
East.
East corner of 13th and Brookline, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So I guess, well, there's one entrance that looks like to a little, some, a place for mini par, a mini parking lot. Then it looks like there's another entrance on Brookline. I'm assuming that's the area where there would be like a garage-style door on the, on the eastern, excuse me, on the west side? This is a question for the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, well, by looking at the dimensions of the lot, the space is extremely limited to where it would only enable the accessibility along Brookline and also on the front along 13th. Uh, I believe you might live catty-corner on this, on the, uh, what is it, west, uh, north?
No, I don't live catty-corner.
Due north.
I live right on the corner, right across the street from where you're trying to put your deal.
Yes, sir.
You know where I live? Talk to you today, remember?
The, the primary vehicular entrance is to the west off of Brookline, it appears.
I live on the corner.
Sir, Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, could you, could, we want to make sure that we can hear you on the microphone. Would you mind going to this podium?
And I highly respect him. And, and I do understand the challenge that we're facing based on the, the blocking and obstruction of, of view. Uh, we are really striving to, to make this a, a very, um, appealing and reduce the noise. One thing that I cannot judge is the personal usage that, uh, Mr. Rodarti would want to have. And that was one of the main reasons that obviously he, he will be or could be approved because it's only personal usage. But I could understand, you know, that if it's even enclosed inside of a well-insulated, uh, building, could still maybe create some disturbance or, or something of, of, of uncomfort. But nonetheless, uh, and predominantly throughout the whole lot, I mean, it really, as you mentioned, it projects to, to see and, and see upcoming industrial development. And if you would go, uh, east of May Avenue, there is already even bigger and newer buildings that are following that pattern. Uh, the main goal was just to, for him to store the, the personal belongings and do some light work, but not necessarily to offer any kind of service to the public that is mechanically, or mechanics related. Um, aside of that, that's really what he has been striving for, uh, a little bit over a year. Um, he was renting a similar unit that is actually about a mile away. It's not displayed on this, uh, view, but it's the identical building that he had envisioned. And he foresees this area to, to be that way in the future, although there is fewer neighbors and residences and that obviously involves you. But by, by being in there, I mean, that's the likelihood that I don't foresee people investing in, in housing other than the people that has already been there for many years, which has a special feeling to, to their own properties, which I could, I could understand. Um, but if, if there was to be housing, the average home here ranges anywhere from 700 to 1,200 a square feet max. And with nowadays, today's prices and, and cost of building a house, I, I wouldn't foresee investors investing $180,000 to $200,000 to put a house in there when they couldn't do it elsewhere.
Okay. Well, just to make sure that we are keeping the conversation moving forward here. Um, I think, Mr. Allen, do you have any, any other comments? I, I know we, and I understand, and I know we've been kind of having a back and forth here, but want to let you have any last comments. And then we're going to go ahead and allow anyone else that, that's here to signed up to speak about this item. Then the commission's going to make a, take your thoughts into consideration and make a final decision about this request.
Well, is the doors to your, uh, garage going, going to face, uh, 13th Street?
Um, there, there would be no, not an over, not an overhead door there. It would be a walk-in.
It has to either face, face 13th Street or Brookline. Which, which is?
The garage.
Brookline.
Garage, whatever you're calling it.
The garage is Brookline.
Brookline, yes. But it would be reduced to, uh, a single entry that, that- But it would be reduced to a, a single entry that, that connects to two overhead doors on that side along Brookline.
And what kind of use you going to use for this?
It would be mainly to store trailers, roadside, roadside assistance equipment, such as like, you know, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I'm representing him, so I don't really know his own, you know, equipment. But I do know that he owns multiple diesel trucks of large size. He has boxes in those trucks, and then he can also have possibly trailers that have additional equipment, such as like-
In other words, he's, he's got a equipment company and works on cars.
Yes.
Hart, now may I ask you a question? If one of his trucks breaks down, or one of his trucks-
Mr.-
You going to work on it online or is he in the bagging over?
Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, our, our rules require you to actually to address the commission. And so we've given you an opportunity to address us. Any final comments? And then we're going to have to hear from someone else as well.
No, I'm, I'm done saying whoops, so I, I ain't no, ain't nothing else to say. Ain't nothing else to say.
Alan was whether there is anything that can be done that would ameliorate the impact you think that this would have on you. For instance, it is not unusual for us to impose hours of operation within an SPUD. So the portion of the, of the development that would fascure property along 13th Street is the portion where the parking is for visitors. If there were hours of operation imposed, 10 o'clock at night, say, then at least people would not be coming and going, that would be parking there. There might still be people using the warehouse. Whatever has, is done there has to be done indoors. Whatever's parked there, whatever work's being done, that's all got to be done inside. But if there is anything that could be done that would make the impact of this development on you less, this is our chance to build those into the SPUD. Are there such things?
Ma'am?
Mr. Allen, you'd have to address this from the podium, please.
Mr. Please sit back to the microphone so your comments can be captured.
When they come in at night with a trailer or a truck or what, they're going to be welding right in my back door all night long, doing whatever they want to do, because that's why they're putting it there. Why don't they go over where the zoning is not residential and do it there and leave me, leave us alone?
That's not the way this process works. We're here to talk about this piece of property and what is appropriate for it.
Well, I, I think we've given, we've given Mr. Allen an opportunity to speak, and we appreciate you coming down.
Y'all don't live there, I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there anyone else wanting to be heard on this item? Any other discussion from commissioners? Do we want to talk about hours of operation or any other thoughts on, on that?
I would like to hear from the applicant on the planned hours of operation.
Anna, did I understand you to say that you're not working on people, I mean, you're not open to the public to bring people's cars in to work on or their equipment or their diesel trucks? You're just, this is strictly a holding place for your applicant's own equipment.
That is correct, yes. That's his whole goal, due to having the necessity of storing and every now and then fixing his own vehicle, but it's mainly light repair, not in danger.
But at 11 o'clock at night, you're not going to have all the doors open, music blaring, and 27 people there welding and hammering on cars.
No, me, me knowing Mr. Eliasor's character and demeanor, although I don't know him fully, he doesn't really reflect to, to be a person of, you know, that could be late, but I, I cannot, I cannot abide by that.
And that's why we're asking, is because as Commissioner Powers said, this is the perfect time to make those adjustments in this application to where he can't work past this time at night, or there is no outdoor working on cars and, 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 all those things that, so maybe your applicant needs to come here and address us himself if you can't answer those questions for him, because when we memorialize this, then, so do you want to take it continuance, or do you want to-
I do want to take it continuance, and the reason being is because if, if he has to abide by a schedule, he's willing to do that as well. And I, and I, I can definitely back him up 100%.
Prepare to speak to that, to, to that schedule, or will you need to consult with him?
No, I can speak to the schedule. And if he breaks the, the rule, then he must abide by, by the law. But if you guys place a certain schedule to say business hours, meaning in general business hours could be seven in the morning until 9:00 PM, if he has that, that time or latitude to work on, he must abide by that, that time.
We feel comfortable with that?
And also putting in there that he is not open to the public to work on anybody else's equipment other than his own.
That is correct, and that was the, the very main reason for him to understand that that is non-negotiable whatsoever neither. And, and he knows that he should never advertise anything to the public.
We need to-
Yeah, we, we need to move on. Mr. Allen, we've, we've heard everything you have to say. I'm not trying to be rude, but we know what you're trying to say. We're actually here trying to help you mitigate this, because I don't think what you understand, even though it's been residential forever, this, this property is zoned I-2 today. He could come I-1. He could come in there without coming in front of us and do a litany of things that you would have absolutely no say over. They wouldn't have to ask your permission. They wouldn't send you a letter. It wouldn't come in front of us. It wouldn't go in front of city council. And you just wake up one morning and there's an I-1 use across the street from your house. I realize that is not tenable to you, you don't like that, but that's the way it is. This property is zoned I-1, and that's what the city zoned it a long time ago.
Yeah, I understand.
That being said, if this gentleman is willing to make concessions to where he's going to operate from seven in the morning till nine at night, there's not going to be anybody working on vehicles in the middle of the night, they're not going to clog up the street with cars, there's not going to be, you know, any commerce going on across the street other than this guy taking care of his own equipment. I think we've gone about as far as we can go as a commission before we have to make a decision. And I understand all of your concerns, but the fact is, is in an I-1 use, gosh, Commissioner Powers, what all could be used in an I-1 use? There could be-
Many.
Many, many, many things in an I-1 use that you would dislike a whole lot worse.
And I, and I think at this point, you know, I think we're, the recommendation, I think, I would recommend, and I'm curious to hear everybody else's thoughts, I think the 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Commissioner Powers is looking at me, I think the 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM seems appropriate to me.
The question-
I would agree, and I would, and I'd be prepared to move on that.
The question that I have, and I wasn't actually looking at you, I was looking at the end chair next to you. Have we lost our legal counsel, or has she just stepped out for a moment?
I think she's just stepped out for a moment.
Whether or not it is possible for us to restrict a property to personal use within the confines of an SPUD, I'm curious to hear. I mean, I'd be all for it. We've been told that that's his intention. Property is zoned I-1. Whether we have the ability to limit that to a use that is not open to the public, I'm all for it if we can, but I, I think I want to know for sure.
Obviously, I'm not a lawyer, but, but it does make me uncomfortable just because it is very specific. I don't know that we have a precedent necessarily.
It's almost like zoning it for a person.
Exactly. It's, it's very, very specific, and this is, the use will eventually change, and it, you're basically writing in the need to come back and get a new zoning, get a, get it rezoned.
I mean, I guess somebody else could buy it for personal use.
Well, and, but not to mention the enforcement aspect of this, too. I mean, that seems very difficult, how you'd, how you'd actually determine that it was, I mean, maybe I just invited a friend over. How do you know that I, you know, that it's not my personal use? That would be my concern, but without having heard from legal counsel.
Not open to the public, maybe, is a better way to, to view it. And I think we maybe have done that before. But I, I'd like to hear from our lawyer, I think, before I vote on that.
Any, any other, while we're, while we're at it, any other thoughts on mitigating measures here?
I was going to point out, we, we have discussed sidewalks, we've talked, talked about dumpsters and screening. The street trees and landscaping, it is clear in the application that it will meet municipal standards. I note that you do show two street trees on the site plan, which are adjacent to your property, which would also help to block views. Obviously, they're not going to be mature day one, but eventually they will be. So I would like to see those remain and ensure that as part of the municipal landscaping standards that you do meet, that you focus it on the adjacent side to the residential across the road.
Yes, sir.
Which makes logical sense, because the other side is your vehicular entrance anyways.
So we're wanting to impose some additional landscaping requirements on the, on the northern side? I'm looking over to landscape experts on the other side of the horseshoe here.
Well, the, I think the city ordinance, you know, with industrial next to residential, and it's by city ordinance, so landscaping by city ordinance is going to cover that.
Take care of it. That's what I was hoping. No further TE on it, but just pointing that out. We're still waiting on, I have no-
Do we, do we need to take this, like, move this to the back of the agenda?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, if we're okay, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
Why don't we, and I don't know if that is a-
Not that far to go, so.
Yeah. Why don't we, why don't we go ahead and, maybe a motion to table till the end of the agenda, just to be clear, process-wise?
So moved.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hinkle to table this item till the end of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, I guess we just need to, can we put that in?
Speaking of-
Oh, never mind, wait a second.
Never mind.
Going to rescind that motion, Commissioner Hinkle?
Rescind it.
We've got a great legal question for you. Commissioner Powers.
Where have you been?
So, the question, the question is, the applicant has indicated that the zoning of this property by this SPUD is for a use that will not be open to the public. Is that something that we can memorialize in the SPUD? I'd have to think about that. I, I don't think so. I mean, I don't think you can limit the public from coming in. I mean, what do you-
No, open to the public, like, it's not going to-
For hire.
Public can to fix their cars.
Oh, yeah, you can do that.
Yeah.
What would the-
Limit hours.
Limit hours.
You can limit hours.
But what would the language, what would that need to say in order to execute that non, that it's not open to the public, to the general public, I suppose?
Services, services provided or not provided to the general public, it's only his own personal business.
I'm perfectly willing to say it's not open to the public and let Ms. Randall figure it out between now and city council.
Sounds good to me. Then we're at, we're at limiting the hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week, is what I'm hearing.
That's, that's what I noted.
Okay. So then we'd be looking at two TEs. One to, that would limit the hours of operation to 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then the other to only allow this, to prohibit this, this property from being open to the, from operating open to the public. We need better language than that.
Mr. Chairman?
Business shall not be open to the general public.
The business shall not be open to the general public.
Hi, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I just want to direct you to page two of the staff report, ask if that, ask our attorneys if that language is sufficient when we talk about the uses, or whether you are looking for something different. It doesn't say it's not open to the public, it just says that the uses are permitted for fleet vehicles only.
No, that's not sufficient.
For fleet, for fleet vehicles?
Yes.
Well-
That doesn't tell you anything. Hertz maintains fleet vehicles.
Okay. Then when you make your recommendation, could you please direct us to amend that section of the staff report if possible? It'll just be cleaner on the backend.
Yeah, we'll just have to get some language. I'm sorry, I missed some of that last, I guess, conversation on exactly what type of vehicles he's going to be working on.
He owns a road-
It's AAA fleet repair.
It's a road rescue company. He's got trucks and things that go out to rescue vehicles, and he's planning on using this as a storage for his trucks and his trailers, and, but that doesn't mean that he won't pull his own trucks in there and work on them. But he won't be open after 9:00 at night, he won't be open before 7:00 in the morning, and he won't invite people to come in and have the roll changed, or the transmissions worked on, or tires changed, or, I mean, a litany of automotive services or any other services to the public.
Right. So I think we can get some language to limit that use unit.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve SPUD 1418 with the addition of two TEs. One, which limits the hours of operation from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week. And number two, that the business is not open to the general public. I don't have better language than that, or if the language needs to be revised, I think that's in the spirit of it.
Sounds sufficient for, for me at this point, and I, I think that we've got six weeks to work out something better. The, the motion is to recommend approval of SPUD 1418 with the technical evaluation amendments as stated by Commissioner Govine. It's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. We're, please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes?
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are ready for item 22.
This is case SPUD 1424, application to rezone 300 Northwest 62nd Street from SPUD 657.
And we are ready to hear from the applicant. Please introduce yourself.
James Thiessen, 228, Robert S. Kerr, Suite 2975, on behalf of the applicant. This is a rezoning of an existing spud to add custom manufacturing. Spoken extensively with Councilwoman Powers. We are in full agreement with TE1 with regards to signage being in full compliance of city ordinances code. Secondly, we've discussed a limitation on the custom manufacturing, that it would be inside the facility. Thank you.
Excellent. This is, this is Ward 2. Commissioner Powers, would you like to start our conversation?
I'd be glad to do that. This, this is a very simple, straightforward application. This is an area that has long, long ago made the transition from residential to industrial uses. There are properties who are in there. But this is, this is a simple modification of a previous SPUD to add custom manufacturing. I, I did ask the applicant if they would be comfortable just with a restatement of the fact that, you know, everything will be indoors, and they are, so that was my only issue with it, or concern about it at all. And I, I'd be very surprised if there's somebody here that wants to speak on this matter.
Is there anyone wanting to be heard on this item? Any questions from commissioners? I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll move approval, item number 22, SPUD 1424.
Commissioner Powers has moved to recommend approval of SPUD 1424 to city council. It has been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. And it is approved. Good luck on your project. We're ready for item 23.
Item 23 is SPUD 1430, application to rezone 1601 Northeast 7th Street from R2 and I-2 to SPUD 1430.
Hello, Fallon Brooks Magnus, 733 Northwest 22nd, here representing the applicant. We are taking an existing lot and subdividing it for single-family homes. We had a couple of technical evaluations. The first one was that the alley must be improved. I would like a definition on what improved means. Does that mean concrete paving? Does that mean paving of some sort?
Do you want to hear from, can we hear from staff on that? They're discussing.
There's a specific technical answer to that question.
They're discussing.
Press being-
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Sarah, I had to explain to me the question. I wasn't understanding what was being said. There is an alley paving standard that the city does have that would have to be followed at a minimum for any construction in that alleyway.
What's that minimum?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. Usually, it's going to be a, for a concrete street, it's going to be a minimum of six inches. And typically, that alleyway is an inverted section, but there's been some revision to that, so off the top of my head, I don't know for sure, but in general, we would require a minimum of six inches.
But it's, it's defined in an, in an ordinance, what improved is.
Yes, there is, there's a standard, and that is available on the city website as well. Yes.
The entirety of it or to the last drive or?
We would have to look at exactly how your site is laid out. You would need, anywhere that you're going to take access out, off of that alley would have to be paved to that standard.
That's still named.
What I'm seeing up here...
That's most of it.
Be the entire length of the alley, and, and there is a, there is a specified width on it as well.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm the owner, Jake Shuffler, 8047 King Note Drive. Is it all the way to our common area, or can we, can we cut it off of the last driveway?
So the applicant had a, was asking a question.
Okay, sorry.
Is it all the way to the end of the common area, or can we end it at the last driveway?
Well, that's what we were just discussing here while you were asking the question. We could end it at that last driveway because that has been done. There's, there's been some precedent for that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
The next one was, number two, we're cool with driveway widths and limitations. Number three, all homes shall be oriented towards the street. Obviously, we're in a bit of a pickle here. We face a railroad. It's not super active, and I would imagine that the problem here with having to face the street is probably for access for fire trucks and things like that. So if, if we're allowed, what we would propose is, is to put a fire hydrant on the corner, and we're, we're within that 250-foot hose lay that would be required for access. So that's, if that's an amenable solution, then that's what we could do.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah Welch, Planning. I just want to clarify that our TE, staff is supportive of the site plan, and so our TEs are intended to, to match the site plan provided, so oriented towards the street. We're still considering that oriented towards 7th, even though the rail line is there, if that makes sense?
Sure, okay.
So we're just trying to find words to, to, to support that site plan that's shown, if that makes sense.
So in other words, don't orient them towards the alley, orient them the other way.
Yeah.
Just making sure that what we've shown is what we're going to do.
Yes, and that's what we're trying to write into the MDS as well, so apologies if it didn't come off that way.
Perfect, thank you.
So do we need, do we need language saying?
Shelf front?
Yeah. Do we need language that just says all homes should be oriented towards 7th Street? Or is that too far? Yeah.
I was just leaving some flexibility for the end unit on Jordan, just in case, just, you know, just a little flexibility in design there, but that's why it doesn't name the street, but...
Oriented to the south? Well, no, but I guess that still has the same issue with the corner.
We would be amenable to that. I mean...
To the 7th Street?
That's the intent anyway, so, yeah, I'm fine with that. If that's the case, then we're, we're good.
No issue with TE4?
TE4 sidewalk, no.
Excellent. This is my ward. I'm in support, including the amendment. Is there any, any questions from commissioners or anyone waiting to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion, and we'd also need to amend TE3 to require that all homes shall be oriented towards 7th Street.
Yes.
I'll move approval of item number 23, SPUD 1430, with a slight amendment to TE3 indicating that all homes shall be oriented toward Northeast 7th.
And 1.
It has been moved by Commissioner Powers that we recommend approval of SPUD 1430 as amended to the, with the included amendment to TE3.
Hold on, hold on, just one second.
Were we, were we going to amend TE1 that the alley must be improved to meet public?
No, that means something specific. It has to be improved to meet standards, so...
Improved, okay.
Yeah, since we, since we identified that improved has a statutory definition or a definition in ordinance, we're, we're satisfied. Unless Barry's retracting that.
No, the, but I think we need to clarify that, that it would be improved to the...
Last driveway.
The limit of the easternmost driveway. We weren't, it wasn't going to be improved through the full extent. It was just through the easternmost driveway into the residence.
No, I don't want to say that.
Do we need to amend the TE?
That's got to decide when it comes to them. That's fine.
Do we need to amend the TE to reflect that?
Well, that's what the discussion is right now.
Oh, okay.
You...
It says there's precedent, so...
If I was the applicant, I would want that amended.
Yeah, I would want the clarification that it's...
Well, and that's, that was our, my discussion with Sarah, was that that has been done on previous developments where that has been, has been allowed to be developed in that manner.
Well, it is, it is Commissioner Powers' motion, so you're saying no to that.
Yeah, I'll be delighted to do it if that's, if everybody wants it that way. I don't see the need for it, and I think it's not a good idea, but that's fine.
Okay, so in addition to the amendment to TE3, we're also amending TE1, that the improvements shall include?
Sure, I would say extend to the limit of the driveway access onto the alley. How's that?
That works. All those, and we are ready to vote when it's available.
Thank you, commissioners.
It is approved. Good luck. Now ready for item 26.
Item 26 is PUD 1903, application to rezone 14998 South Choctaw Road from AA.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. So this is an application that would allow for a mix of commercial use on the corner and then two-acre development on the balance of the track. This is right across the street to the east, across Choctaw from a PUD application that came before you at the last meeting, seeking commercial use there on the corner. So we've, even in large part, tried to match those commercial uses that were recommended for approval to the west with this five-acre tract here, and then again, the balance to be two-acre residential subdivision. There are a handful of TEs, most of which I am in agreement with. Perhaps we start there. So I am in agreement with 3 through 7. As it relates to TE1, we would not agree. It asks us to modify it for five acres. Of course, we could do five acres now without asking permission. If you look at the area, there is a mix of some one acres and two acres, so we went with the two acre. This has been a common practice in this particular area in Oklahoma City. I think, in fact, the last two planning commission dockets have had multiple RA2 applications that come before you. That's what we seek to do here. On TE2, I just need to clarify that the 50-foot setback is a 50-foot building setback, creating a 50-foot buffer that creates a dead space, I think, to be problematic. So we agree to a 50-foot building setback within the commercial tract, and then we'd ask to extend or add the words "to the extent possible" at the end of that sentence so that trees will be preserved to the extent possible, but as I've made the argument many times, there is not a tree survey that exists within Oklahoma City, and oftentimes, when people agree to that, it's agreeing to something that is not enforceable, and that is, of course, not what the intent of a PUD is to do. So to the extent possible, we're happy to preserve within that 50-foot building setback. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Commissioner Privet?
Yep. David, didn't you tell me you were willing to nix the fast food with drive-through? Or did I dream that?
No, we talked about that on another item, not here. We do have the standard language, though, that the 150-foot for the speaker box from a residential use.
Yeah. I just hate those things right next to residential.
150 feet, though.
Yeah.
And frankly, if we do have one, you see the depth of the commercial, it would be unlikely that a fast food would be, there's like the ability to have two separate pad sites, right?
Right, it'd be on the hard corner.
And it's going to be on the front edge, which will be several hundred feet away from any residential.
Yeah, okay. And as far as the lot size, I think two acres probably be my minimum nowadays, so keep that in mind when we're trying to do some acre sites or half-acre sites. But, yep, I'm okay with two acres.
Excellent. Any questions from commissioners for the applicant? Anyone here wanting?
I do actually have, there's not anything that I see here that specifically says there won't be any poll signs.
That there won't what?
Be any poll signs. We don't like poll signs. We don't want poll signs.
Perhaps the traveling public in Ward 4 does. We don't know yet. I'm happy to add poll signs will not be allowed.
Thank you.
To the detriment of the traveling public in Ward 4.
We'll leave that part, that commentary part can be excluded from the TE.
My children inform me that nobody looks at signs anymore. It's all on your phone and, you know, so...
Really?
Signs are...
I need to have a long talk with your children.
I look at signs.
Oh, no, have you come over to the house and get them a talking?
So any, any other questions for, from, from commissioners? Anyone in the public wishing to be heard on this item? Yes, sir? Either one.
Either one, yeah.
Yeah, my name's Gary Kaler. I live at 15400 Choctaw Hills Road. My wife and I own property just north and adjacent to this property. It's the two units on the east side, so we have 12 acres there. My question is, there's a proposed turnpike coming through which takes out my house and all of my 12 acres, and I am currently, as you're well aware, market prices are really high right now. I'm unable to morally sell my place right now because a turnpike is coming through the property.
Maybe David has something you don't?
My question on this development is, my concern is the flip side of essentially agriculture land right there that's been agricultural for years, and now we have a proposed development coming in. So I would think that the southwest corner that has the commercial, the five acres, that is outside the boundary of the OTA's proposed turnpike. I don't see any point or purpose for making a development of homes that are going to be bulldozed.
But do, as far as the actual project itself, do you have any questions, concerns about this project? Because it's not within our purview whether there's a turnpike coming or not, is not...
Agreed. My, my conjecture is that I feel the project should be limited to commercial on the five acres on that southwest corner. That's, that's basically the only point. And like I say, the, the flip side is I can't sell my property and my home today, yet a developer can come in and rezone from agricultural to commercial and multi-use on a 120-acre parcel of which, and again, I know it's out of your purview on the turnpike, but heaven forbid homes be built and then torn down.
Well, I mean, I appreciate your comments. So you're, the biggest issue as far as this proposal, again, whether the turnpike's coming or not, this applicant owns that property, has the right to request this rezoning. The question before the commission is, does it comply with the comprehensive plan? Is it consistent with our subdivision regulations? Is it compatible? And so at this point, that's what we can, what we have the authority to address for the applicant. I certainly agree with you that I would think that if the turnpike is coming, it'd be a waste to build homes there, and so I certainly hope that if, if that is the plan and that OTA enacts that plan, that we wouldn't be building homes here, so that it's, that is not, the resources are not wasted, but that is not our decision to make today.
Right, I understand. One last thing I would like to know, on my southern boundary, what would the proposal be from this development if it gets, say if the turnpike gets shelved and the development goes through, what would be the, the barrier from my acreage? Because right now, my acreage is just open-ended with a fence that's 80 years old, that's run down, so...
So I think is the question regarding any screening requirements?
We can decide that.
Or, yeah, we would have the ability to decide that.
And, and there is, there is quite a bit of drainage off of the southern part of my property that would go into the northeast portion of this property.
David, you want to address that?
There'd be a fence.
Okay, and that's already required within this?
Yes.
That's required, just, I think.
A fence of what type?
It would likely be stockade. It would likely be a stockade fence.
Stockade, so it would be a privacy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how high?
Six to eight is what the code allows for.
Six to eight, okay.
And these would be two-acre lots?
Right, and, and all the property in the addition that I live in is five-acre or six-acre lots, which is fairly consistent with that immediate area. As you go north, about a half a mile in Maple Ridge, there are one-acre lots, so I do understand the potential for doing two-acre now, but immediately next to this is five-acre, so, anyhow, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? I think we have some amendments to TEs that have been proposed. One is to eliminate, well, excuse me, to amend TE1 to two acres, then to amend TE2 to read as follows, "A 50-foot building setback shall be provided between the commercial and residential tracks, and trees shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible."
Then we need to add TE8, no poll sign, and TE1 just needs to be struck.
Yeah.
Okay, strike TE1, amend TE2, add TE, I guess, which would become the new TE7, banning poll signs.
I do, we'll add...
That Commissioner Powers' kids don't use.
I do, and I do use signs.
So a prohibition on EMD, non-necessary signs, billboards, and poll signs would be TE7. So I'll make a motion to approve PUD 1903, striking TE1 and TE2, holding TE3, 4, 5, 6, and amending 7 to add poll signs. Did I get everything?
You got it right. Good. Commissioner Privet has moved to recommend approval of PUD 1903. It's been seconded by Commissioner Hinkle with the amendments as read into the record. Please vote, cast your votes when available. And, and it is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for item 27.
Item 27 is SPUD 1420, application to rezone 3216 Northwest 23rd Street from R1 to SPUD 1420.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This application is for an SPUD that would allow limited commercial uses along Northwest 23rd Street, just east of Independence. It is the vacant lot. Commissioner Powers had that question earlier. It's a vacant lot that exists. If you'll note in our site plan, I feel like we took fairly good care to screen anything to the east. It is worth noting that the building to the east, as we're told in our staff report, there was a former district court action that permitted commercial uses there, so commercial uses is consistent here. It still is a residential structure, so we did put that landscape buffer to the east and reflected on our site plan. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and I do agree to both technical evaluations.
Thank you. This is Ward 6, so Commissioner Govine?
Is there anyone signed up to speak on this item?
I don't believe so. Yeah, no one's here to speak on it. I've met with Mr. Box. I think this is an appropriate development. For 23rd Street, there's a number of similar commercial developments. Like this, I have no concerns or further questions.
Excellent. Any other questions from commissioners?
Did I understand you say you're in agreement with the TEs?
Yes.
And what did you decide about animal sales and services, can all be veterinary restricted?
We'd like to keep it. I think 23rd Street, with all of the new young urbanists that live there, they all have at least one and a half dogs, according to the latest data that I've seen, and having the ability to get them serviced at a veterinary clinic could be deemed important.
Are you going to provide those, that evidence for the record, or should we just?
So because it's restricted, that, that doesn't allow the outdoor runs?
I think, I've looked at this fairly recently. I think that it actually does allow for the animals to be outdoors. It doesn't allow, like, it...
They don't allow outdoor runs, like a, so that the general use unit allows for the outdoor runs. The restricted is a vet clinic. I mean, a traditional veterinary clinic is the restricted use unit.
Wait, is the staff on that?
I, can, can somebody, I'm sorry, I should have done that. I have looked at this fairly... I have looked at this fairly recently. The language of the actual use unit has, you know, some indication that it doesn't prohibit the animals from being outdoors. You back up to one of these things, it can be a lot. And, you know, there are residences immediately to the south of this property, so.
True.
The, yeah, the restricted, the restricted, you would have to take the, well, my dog goes to Classen View, so that, that's a good example. That's a good example. So, they have, they have, they have to take the doggies out on a leash to go potty. And I can't believe I said that at a planning commission meeting. So, but, so they're not allowed to run outside and have boarding that would allow them to run free, like in an outdoor yard.
I know that that's true, but it does permit boarding, if I recall. And so, you know, having dogs barking that close to my back fence, I, that's just, I wouldn't want that, so. Ask again.
So, we would like the ability to have a vet clinic. We think it's an appropriate use, given the nature of the area. It's no different than the, you know, the, I don't know where you said, Sarah. Is that the one on 23rd? Yeah.
But it backs up to commercial uses.
It's right across the street from those houses that are, the residential uses that exist south of 22nd Street in Gaywood.
That's true, there are.
What is DCD 24? Is that an overlay district or?
The district court case.
When we're urban, or redesigned.
All right.
So, I think, I think if there's no further discussion, I think we're ready for a motion.
I move to approve SPOD 1420 with the TE's as written.
The motion is to recommend approval of SPOD 1420 to City Council. And it's been seconded by?
I thought was somehow a glitch. I don't know how that happened.
Let's see if we can get a second. Want to get someone else to second the motion?
We have, it's not available.
Oh.
I'll second.
Excellent, and it is approved. Item 28.
Item 28 is SPOD 1421, application to rezone 2890 Northwest 192nd Street from PUD 1028.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an application that would, I'm surprised that there's not a group of people here to cheer this one on. We're, we are doing what Deer Creek has asked us to do. We are taking away multifamily, and we're replacing it with commercial. So, we're excited to be here to do that. This is zoned in that original Valencia PUD was the entire square mile way back when in 2005. It carved out corners for multifamily. The balance of this corner has already been developed as multifamily. This is what's left remaining. So, what we seek to do is to turn this into a commercial development. If you're familiar with the area, both May and 192nd are fully developed with four lanes. It's a fully signalized intersection with turn signals, right for commercial development. You can see all the homes that exist. Both the northeast and northwest corner are inactive, or the northeast is in active development now. So, lots of rooftops. We think commercial would be a good use here. There are two TE's, TE2 we agree with, we do not agree with TE1. We do not want to put the parking in the rear to the side. If you are familiar with this area, this is a very suburban-style commercial developments. There are not, this is not class and curve, this is not downtown. There is not a single example that I can picture up here that has parking in the rear. We think frankly it would create a strange viewscape at 192nd and May. So, Cindy, if you could go back real quick to the site plan. The site plan we have drawn may have some parking in back, but we do intend to develop it as viewed here. So, we would ask to strike TE1.
Yes, go ahead. We're going to hear from our planning director.
Yeah, just if I might. So, this TE is something that we're going to, that staff looks for in opportunities like this. It may not be common in this area, it may not be common in Oklahoma City. It is very common in other areas of the country, suburban areas, to have buildings, and it's not always possible, granted, but this seemed like a good opportunity. If you turn the one building and scoot it towards the arterial and scoot the other one towards the arterial, there's still plenty of vacant, excuse me, of very visible parking. And what that does, it does a couple of things. It gives you a better, from an urban design, and yes, urban design is important even in the suburbs. It gives you a better street. Yeah, actually, speaking of signs, makes the signs on the buildings more visible. So, it's good for business from that perspective. And it also, like I said, provides still ample visible parking. People can still see it because it's to the side of the building, which would be, what would be required. So, just wanted to kind of throw that out there. It is, it's a best practice in terms of urban design and walkability. And it would still allow you to have all the square footage that's shown there, just in a different layout. There's plenty of room on this site. Like I said, it's not always the case, and often we don't say anything about it because the last case might be an example, it could have been done, but it would have been a lot harder. So, just wanted to give that background as to why staff recommended that. And it is a PUD or an SPOD, and so the commission has the ability to negotiate such things.
So, we did an SPOD to take away uses that we frankly thought were incompatible. We, we do not have any interest in putting the buildings towards the frontage and putting the parking in the rear. I mean, what we're doing in a zoning case is really discussing compatibility and intensity of uses, not designing projects. The market is going to dictate the type of building that gets built here. Perhaps it does get built to the frontage, but the market's going to dictate that. So, we would ask to strike TE1, and we accept TE2.
Well, this is, thank you. This is Ward 8. We get to hear from our new commissioner, Commissioner Noble.
Is there anybody here to speak first?
Anyone wanting to be heard on this item? It's all yours.
No. And I'll agree with the applicant. I saw that the parking issue, and I looked everywhere around here, similar land uses, and there weren't any that followed that. And so, I wasn't aware that being an urban and a walkability, I read that it met the walkability issues, but this is really not urban. And so.
Yes, suburban, sorry. I meant to say suburban.
Oh, okay. I kind of agree with the applicant. I think that the property and the owner will make the decision on the buildings and the land use.
I sense, any comments from, any other comments from commissioners?
Here's my two cents on parking and building placement. I don't agree that we're not here to try to do some design. I think we are. But the problem with putting parking to the side or behind buildings is what it is then put adjacent to. There are some areas where I have no problem with that. I think it's a great idea. But when you're moving it closer to residential, that I don't feel so great about. So, this one's maybe a close call. Such a busy intersection. It is like fully, you know, developed, developing, developable. I don't feel a huge push to push the parking to the rear of this, partly because it is then adjacent to residential. And that's problematic for me. Then you hear people coming and going, and, you know, their horns and their car doors and all that, so.
So, trade off.
I'm likewise, I'm right there on the borderline with you, and I tried to go that route on this application myself. I don't, on the flip side of that is, I'm not comfortable with saying we don't do that because it's not right for this area and no one else has done it. Because then it never happens when we, as soon as we approve this, the next one says the same. So, but in this case, I don't, I don't disagree with either of you. I think it's probably a lost cause for this site.
Yeah, I echo those comments too. And just to add, like, what's up with the horrendous map that you included in here?
I'm sorry?
The horrendous map that we got here with?
Horrendous?
Well, it's pretty bad.
You know, my client took care to draw this, and I thought it looked quite nice, frankly. Better than I could do.
Is this where we had the huge apartment complex that had just a little bubble a couple of years ago, and the neighborhood was up in arms about it?
Yes, sir. That's who I thought would be here with their black t-shirts with the bright gold deer to say thank you, but they weren't.
Well, I want to again echo Commissioner Gauvain's comments. In this instance, under these circumstances, I agree that we should not enforce TE. I'm in agreement about eliminating TE1. But in a future circumstance, I would fully support this. I think it's an excellent concept. I think it's the direction we should go. I certainly would want to support it in more urban core developments, but that's my opinion. So, I'm agreeing this time, but when you come back and try to bring us the exact same argument, you know.
It's a heavy hedge, I like it.
Yeah. Anyway, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to, a motion forward to approve item 28, SPOD 1412.
With, and delete TE1.
And deleting TE1.
1421.
1421.
The motion by Commissioner Noble is to recommend approval of SPOD 1421 to City Council. Let's see. And it has been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. It is approved.
Thank you.
And finally, item 29.
This is SPOD 1422, application to rezone 8008 West Wilshire Boulevard from R1 to SPOD 1422.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who's also here with us. This application is for a tract of land that exists as R1, but is sandwiched between an existing single-family neighborhood to the west and a Casey's gas station that has been built right there at the corner of Wilshire and Council. So, what we have tried to do here is to come in with a modified commercial development, limiting uses that we believe to be compatible with the, not only the gas station to our east, but the neighborhood to the west. There are a handful of TE's that I'd like to discuss and some additions at the request of Commissioner Claire. So, TE1 we agree to. We'd ask to delete TE2 to allow restaurant uses based upon the proximity of the neighborhood. We couldn't get a speaker box anyways, based upon the 150-foot separation requirement that has been imposed by this commission on every application. So, any fast food would have to exist without a speaker box, which I think that hopefully takes away the concern that exists with that use unit.
Wait a second, you're saying delete TE2?
Can we just delete that?
Delete TE2.
Just delete the use unit.
Can we delete the use unit?
No, no, delete TE2 so that the use units exist.
Okay, but then take out use unit 8300.36, right?
No, keep it in, but the inability, we can just say no speaker shall be permitted.
All right.
Because we don't have 150 feet. So, the deletion of TE2 would allow for restaurant uses, is what I'm saying.
And then we would, we would add a TE saying, no speakers?
Yes.
Okay.
TE3 we agree to. Commissioner Claire has asked that within that, we have canopy trees on 25-foot centers, which we agreed to. And then we agree to TE4 and TE5. And then Commissioner Pennington asked that we delete the participant recreation indoor use unit, and we agree to that.
And that is?
What does that one include?
Oh, where is that one?
I think it's 80.
8300.55. This is, Commissioner, anything else?
No, sir.
Commissioner Claire?
Yeah, I think I'm good with all that. I just want to make sure I'm clear. We're deleting TE2, but what about the custom manufacturing and laundry services use units?
We can, we can delete those.
So, we're not going to delete TE number 2, which is.
Well, we can remove custom manufacturing, but we want to keep the restaurant uses, and we can delete the laundry services. So, it would just be a modification of TE2 to remove from the TE 8300.34, 8300.35, and 8300.36.
Okay, that's what I had.
And then we'd be modifying 8300.36 to eliminate drive-through speakers.
Yes. And then TE3, adding the canopy trees on 25-foot centers. And then TE6, the deletion of the 8300.55. Commissioner Pennington.
Thank you. Are we, anyone, any commissioners wanting to be heard on this item? Anyone from the public wanting to be heard on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Just some concerns about.
Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Kathleen Gookin. I live at 7716 Percheron Road, which is on the west side. My house is closest to the borderline there, right there. So, my concern was noise from maybe a restaurant to, if it's going to be a restaurant, I don't really know. But there's Casey's, which is up very high, can see into my yard. If they have to follow suit with the raising of the land, about drainage, maybe some landscaping issues to where nobody can see in our yards. And maybe hours of operation to where we're still residential. We still go to sleep at night. So, with the noise, that's mostly my main concern, is noise and drainage, litter, you know, everything that can come with a restaurant, smell, you know, things like that.
Certainly very reasonable, being next to your home. Thank you for coming. Does anyone have any questions for our speaker? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, in terms of, oh, I'm sorry. In terms of drainage, of course, no matter what we do, we're going to have to submit drainage study to the city. They'll have to review it. And frankly, whatever they say we have to do is what we'll have to do. In terms of noise, I think actually the development of the site will create a buffer between what is undoubtedly a noisy situation at the Casey's gas station and this. This is a pretty narrow lot. It's only 120 feet in width. And so, no matter what gets built there, based upon the uses I think that we have, it's going to provide a little bit of a break from that noise. And the addition of the canopy trees, as requested by Commissioner Claire, I think also goes a long way to helping in that regard.
So, just so we can clarify, there's going to be, there's a requirement that there be 10 feet of landscape buffer between you and your neighbor's homes that are immediately adjacent to this property? And then we have an amendment to require that they be on 25-foot center trees right there so that there's some more site proofing. So, that'll actually help you with Casey's as well. So, that is a good thing. As far as the comments about hours of operation, you want to address that?
Yeah, I mean, we're not inclined to agree to limit hours of operation. I said that for years from this podium. I don't even think it's enforceable, frankly. We have, I mean, the Casey's undoubtedly is some form of 24-hour operation. The uses that we have included in here are not uses that would ever tend to be 24 hours. These are typical uses outside the restaurant that might be open till, say, 10 o'clock. But we don't think the uses here are ones that would ever limit them or lend themselves to some sort of late night, like a gas station.
And it's on a major arterial street, too.
Correct.
Any comments, questions from commissioners? Please come back to the mic.
Come to the podium.
I have a question, David, while she's coming up. What would be your height limitation, since you're so directly adjacent to residential? What would you, what would you be held to? C3 base?
I defer to staff on that. I mean, because we are adjacent to single-family. Is it 20 feet? 50, no, the height? 20 feet.
In addition to that, I do want to point out that dumpsters have to be 50 feet away from the nearest property line.
I hear Casey's dumpsters at 4:00 in the morning. So, my other thing is Casey's closes at 11:00. There are no lights on. They might be still inside cooking or do whatever. I just wanted to let you know, they do close at 11:00.
Well, if Casey's closes at 11:00, it seems reasonable to me. Well, if Casey's closes at 11, it seems reasonable to me to make them close at 11, too. Thoughts on that? I mean, it's Commissioner Claire?
I'd be stunned to learn that a gas station closes at 11.
Yeah, I mean.
Gas pumps undoubtedly are still going to be able to be.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, I mean, I would be inclined, I mean, it's going to be a restaurant. You know, it's possible that they have drive-through open until 2, you know, most cases, so.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I do, I want to ask for clarification from you, Mr. Chairman, on the use unit 8300.55. You want to exclude that?
Yep, delete that.
So would we just include that in TE 2? Since we're modifying TE 2, just add it in.
That would seem easier to me, and then add another TE where we limit the use unit 8300.36 with the drive-through windows, where we eliminate the ability to have a speaker.
Yes. All right, any further discussion?
I think we're ready for a motion.
I think we're prepared to make a motion. I'd like to move to recommend for approval of City Council SPUD 1422, modifying TE 2 to remove use units 8300.34, 8300.35, 8300.36, but adding 8300.55. Modifying TE 3 to include additional language that canopy trees, shall be included in the landscape buffer 25 foot on center for the length of the west boundary. And adding TE 6 that limits the use unit of 8300.36 to eliminate the use of a drive-through speaker.
Excellent. The motion is to recommend approval of SPUD 1422 to City Council. It's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes when available. It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Well-run meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. We made it.
Started out rocky, but ended good.
Did, we got.
That whole consent docket thing, that's probably the most we've ever pulled from the consent docket.
Expect the unexpected was what I learned today. I think we are now ready, as I try to find my agenda. I don't believe we have any further business. We are ready for any additional items? I don't think there are any. Planning Commission committees? Any committee reports? I don't think we have any commission report, committee reports. Commission members, Commissioner Claire?
No, I just want to congratulate Ms. Welch for a planning commission first of using potty in a public meeting.
I think we have a use unit for that. I also enjoyed it. Commissioner Powers?
I would just like to say congratulations for making it through your first meeting. I thought you did a wonderful job.
Oh, thank you.
I'm looking forward to having you chair our meetings from now on.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for making so many motions for us to keep the business moving. So I appreciate it. Definitely was thrown for a loop on these consent items, but we made it. Commissioner Fraley?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Privet?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Hinkle? Commissioner Gauvain?
Welcome, Commissioner Noble. Nothing else?
Yes, I want to say welcome to Commissioner Noble. You did a great job. You had to wait till the very end to get a more aid item, but I hope you enjoyed it.
I did, thanks. It was a learning experience, but yeah, it was fun.
It's fun. It was good. I do want to say how much, we had a, we did have a great pre-meeting with staff, and I really appreciate them taking the extra time today to visit with a couple of us. Really appreciate that insight. I hope that that's something that we can resume doing. I really wanted to allow the newer commissioners to have that opportunity to just come in and have that pre-meeting. So I know that, you know, between Commissioner Fraley and Gauvain and Noble, if you all would like to join in the future, I think that would be a good idea just to kind of get an understanding of what to expect from the meeting. But as I learned after spending an hour before the meeting preparing, that that doesn't matter because people will show up and we'll have to change course anyway. So anyway, that would be a helpful thing. I also just want to say, as you've watched the meeting today, please feel free to send me feedback and let me know how I can do a better job and any ideas that you will have for improving our process so that we can work well with staff and to our applicants to be more efficient and effective in doing our job. But I appreciate you all and all of your help and hard work. It's not easy to spend three hours here serving the public, but I appreciate it, so. I think we're in line for, Planning Department?
Yeah, a couple of things. Microphone? Couple of things. So we, for our three newest planning commissioners, we'd like to have an orientation for a couple of you. Sorry, Commissioner Noble, we didn't, I was on vacation like between the time when you were confirmed and now confirmed. That's at federal level. I used the wrong word there. But we'd like to have an orientation to cover a lot of background, Plan OKC, just subdivision regulations, plating, and kind of the whole nine yards. What you weren't able to get before this meeting was kind of the rundown of the nuts and bolts of how it works. And but I understand you've watched a few commission meetings, so hopefully you felt prepared. But we'd like to do that soon, so I think that email, you'll be getting an email tomorrow just to put a few calendar. Hopefully we can get that taken care of before the next commission meeting. And then one other thing, we'll have, so from time to time, we hold special meetings that we call study sessions, and they kind of come in waves, it seems, just depending on what's going on and what we need to talk about. And it allows the planning commission to be better prepared and have kind of more in-depth discussion on items. And so we have a couple of those coming up. One is coming up in August, and this one is for the capital improvements plan. So every other year, the city, it's a formal process. It's been done for, I don't know how long. But every other year, the planning commission reviews the city's capital improvement plan and makes a recommendation. And that's something that is in the state statute that the planning commission needs to review major capital projects. So that'll be coming up, and we typically do a study session for that. And department heads will present their, the major capital improvements that they've got coming up. And then. We have, yeah, every couple of years. So and then the last one, or the next one, we've got scheduled tentatively for September 8th. And that's something that the Chamber of Commerce has, and the Alliance for Economic Development have expressed interest. I don't want to say new or even renewed interest. They've always had interest in the employment layer and making sure that we're preserving employment land. But they would like to, in conjunction with city staff, kind of review that with the commission. And we haven't done that in a while. We do that periodically. There's some things that we'd like to talk to the commission about, and I may have alluded to them in the, in past meetings. But there's talk about updating the study that was done about a decade ago. And there's, we'd like to update you also on some more concrete measures that have been taking and that we'd like to take and get your opinions as well. So just wanted to make you aware of those things. Also, I am a sign user. I spent some time in California, and I use my phone a lot to find destinations, but I do, I do admit to using signage. It's really helpful when you're in a new place. Oh, there it is, there's my destination.
But no pole sign?
Absolutely. I never, ever use the pole sign. There you go. And, oh, I did, I did notice that there were several gas stations. And I've seen, in fact, Sarah and I were looking at this the other day in Oklahoma City. There's a place, and I forget where it was we were looking. There's a gas station with a pole sign and a gas station right across the street with the monument sign. And the difference is really kind of, it's really interesting to see right there in Oklahoma City. Anyway, I saw a lot of that recently, those kind of more modest-looking signs where they have all the pricing and everything. And you still get the information you don't, you need, you don't have a sign. Maybe you don't see it as far in advance, and that's still debatable, how much you need that with our phones these days. But anyway, I digress.
Which one did you go get gas at, though?
Of course, I went to the more modest-looking. No.
But was there a billboard down the road?
Yeah. There were a lot of billboards. There were a lot of billboards, yeah.
Thank you. Municipal Council's office. Citizens to be heard. Dustin? Okay. No other business? I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. It's been moved, but moved, seconded? All those in favor? Opposed? All right. We're adjourned.